City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cell phones and electronic devices. Thank you. Just as a reminder, per rule 42 of the City Council rules, that there are no signs of approval or disapproval in chambers. That includes, but is not limited to cheering, clapping, booing, and if such demonstrations are made, we may have to clear the area. At a recent Rules Committee meeting, and this is to my colleagues, there's, in the rules are allocations of time for how long people should speak. We obviously have not been adhering to that, but per rule, per the rules, it says that a proponent of a motion, resolution should have three minutes to speak. I do this because we have a long agenda, so hopefully we can get through this by limiting how much we are speaking and reserving further conversation on matters for hearings. With that out of the way, I wanted to highlight a few things today. May is a busy month for not only myself, but for many of our councils as we observe and celebrate a number of things. First, Happy May Day to everyone, also known across the world as International Labor Day. We have one of our unions in the House. We celebrate our labor victories, such as Eight Hour Workday, and to many, May Day is also a day to celebrate the springtime tradition that marks the start of summer. Either way, we celebrate it as a day of unity and togetherness. I know there are a lot of May Day activities happening today, and there are so many, there's a rally for Stuart Healthcare at St. Elizabeth, at St. Elizabeth's on Monday, so we continue to work in partnership with labor on May Day and every day. It's also Haitian Heritage Month, and as you know, I'm the first Haitian American on the Boston City Council, and Boston has the second largest per capita Haitian population. Happy Haitian Heritage Month. Joyeuse à moi et à Jésus. And especially during this difficult time in Haiti, we celebrate and honor the first free Black republic in the world, and we hope for freedom, true freedom. And we also celebrate May as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We reflect and celebrate the important role that the AAPI community have played in our shared history, and our first elected mayor, our first elected mayor, a woman mayor of color, Michelle Wu. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden. Counselor Coletta. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Louie Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Santana. Counselor Weber. And Counselor Worrell. A quorum is present.
Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. You will also see in your agenda today that there are a number of other things that we recognize in May, and I will allow my colleagues to speak on that further. It is my pleasure, especially in honor of AAPI Month, to introduce this week's clergy, Reverend Jin Min Lee. Oh, Jin Min, if you could join us? Jin Min Lee was born in Seoul, South Korea, and immigrated to the United States in the early 1980s with her parents and two older sisters. Her first language was Korean, and she began in English as a second language student in Framingham Public Schools. She has been a Boston resident for the majority of her adult life, with the last dozen years in Jamaica Plain and Rosendale. Jin Min's understanding about faith, vocation, and leadership was shaped as a first-generation student at Wellesley College, where its community continues to be inspired by the motto, "Not to be served, but to serve." After graduate studies, she began consulting at Emmanuel Gospel Center in the South End to build a programmatic and evaluation capacity of nonprofits and churches. While on staff at EGC, Jin Min was also a member of the teaching team of Urban Ministry and System Thinking of Gordon Cornwell Seminary City Urban Ministerial Education Satellite Location in Roxbury. From 2015 to 2018, she was a bishop's appointee and the Mission Hub Initiative Director for the Episcopal Diocese of Massachusetts. She helped distribute a number of grants and helped meet community needs. Most recently, Jin Min has been consulting and coaching with a race, equity, and inclusion lens so that individuals and organizations can be self-aware and strategically operationalize their value, their values. Throughout her career, she has sought to build bridges of access and relationship between communities of resource and those of need. Her passion lies in bringing about reduction in personal and interpersonal brokenness and systemic injustice through approaches that prioritize compassion, self-reflection, curiosity, vulnerability, and courage. I thank you, Jin Min, for being with us. I know I gave you a title change, but you are still a woman of cloth and a woman who is really dedicated to the city and to healing our city, so without further ado, I give you the mic. And after she does her invocation, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Jin Min, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor. It's an honor to be here on the first day of Asian Pacific Islander Desi American or APIDA Month. I am here both as an individual and as a member of a much larger collective. My personal experience has been shaped at the intersection of being an immigrant, person of color, woman, and a member of the working class. I am a proud longtime Boston resident and an active member of the faith and nonprofit communities. As an East Asian and Korean American, I want to name that we often enjoy greater visibility, educational access and attainment, wealth, and privilege. With that said, it is important to name in specific APIDA communities that are less visible but equally crucial to the thriving of our city: Cambodian Americans, Vietnamese Americans, Pakistani Americans, Filipina Americans, Nepalese Americans, and others too many to name. With the limited time I have today, it is important to lift up the pernicious issue of the model minority myth and how it harms all. The model minority myth is the idea that Asian Americans are and should be high-achieving academically and professionally, tireless workers, quiet, obedient, polite, subservient, and submissive. It flattens and erases our wide range of economic, educational, social, and political realities and lived experiences. The model minority myth pressures us to seek the approval and allegiance of the status quo that upholds white supremacy systems. It minimizes our humanity and sets a narrow standard for how we can and should be acceptable and palatable to others, particularly those who are gatekeepers of opportunity. The model minority myth often pits APIDA communities against Black and Brown communities through comparison, competition, and scarcity mentality. In this way, APIDA communities are weaponized to be single-story narratives of exceptionalism to discredit and minimize any protest that many of our existing systems are gravely broken, and that we, as a city and as a country, need to unceasingly advocate and sacrificially work toward reform to bring forth greater equity and justice for all BIPOC. With the time that remains, I would like to offer a poem-prayer written by a fellow Korean-American faith leader, Arena Kim Yubanks.
Can I ask everyone, she recites a poem, just to stand? Thank you.
It's entitled "Fearfully Wonderfully." The poet says, "I praise you because I am fearfully and wonderfully made. Your works are wonderful; I know that full well. Yet the gifts of being Asian and American in these lands we have rarely known. Buried beneath the weight of yellow peril, model minority, exotic and oriental, hidden behind the labels of other, foreigner, and stranger, we have felt fear more than wonder, exclusion more than embrace. But to acknowledge your works in us is to acknowledge that you are a good creator. To celebrate the gifts we carry is to remember you are a generous giver. So today, we choose praise. We praise you for ancestors who carried tears in their eyes, hopes in their hearts and memories in their bags, names, stories, and faces in their minds. We praise you for these sojourners leaving behind revolutions and genocides, families lost in mushroom clouds, lands destroyed from colonization, homes ravaged by wars they did not start, names too demanding for the white man's tongue. We praise you for the work of their hands, diplomas that weren't valued here, songs and poems lost to thick accents, sweat unseen and poured out on railroads and farms, laundry mats and factories, lives given up for family and country. I praise you for our resistance leaders marching for just immigration laws, fair labor practices, freedom from internment, protection from hate and violence, dreaming of civil rights for all. I praise you for the unseen expressions of love, bellies filled up, fruit cut up after meals, bills paid in secret, for intuition and indirect communication, for never having to be asked. I praise you for the theologies of Han and Chong, for scripture read with the eyes of the exiled, for God as Creator, as Mother, as Master, for Jesus, the One from a liminal place, for deep understandings of honor and shame. I praise you for communion performed with roti, hymns uttered in mother tongues after church fellowship over chuk and synagogue, every early morning prayer before the crack of dawn. I praise you for churches that were language schools, welcome centers, culture preservers, for dining tables transformed into remnants of home, for every gift, both seen and unseen, valued and dismissed, named and silenced. We praise you. We are fearfully and wonderfully made."
We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Jin Min, for that very, very moving poem and those very, very moving words. We are now on to presentations. The first presentation, I would like to invite up, oh, okay. Mr. Clerk, will you please update the record, because Counselor Worrell and Counselor Coletta are now with us. We are now moving on to presentations. I would like to call up Zahila Gonzalez Zamora and Ken Field, President of Jazz Boston. So for those of you who don't know, April 30th, April 30th is recognized as International Jazz Day. In November 2011, the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, UNESCO, officially designated it as Jazz Day in order to highlight jazz and its diplomatic role of uniting people in all corners of the globe, including Morocco, Chile, Cameroon, Mozambique, Italy, Korea, Sweden, Brazil, Japan, and Lebanon. We know that here jazz has a particular meeting its roots, and it started in the African-American community, telling stories of the African-American experience. International Jazz Day brings together communities, schools, artists, historians, academics, and jazz enthusiasts all over the world to celebrate and learn about jazz and its roots, future, and impact, raise awareness of the need for intercultural dialogue and mutual understanding, and reinforce international cooperation and communication. Boston has been home to many legendary jazz musicians, such as Mal Hallett, Leo Resiman, Don Redman, Johnny Hughes, Harry Carney, Dean Earl, and so many others, all who have fostered a vibrant jazz scene that contributes to the city's reputation as a cultural hub. And in the 1940s and 50s, Boston thrived with well-known jazz clubs: the Hi-Hat, the Wigwam, Savoy, and Wally's, frequented by jazz greats at the intersection of South End and Roxbury. Wally's is still operating today, offering live music. When I was a tour guide, Wally's was one of the, one of my stops that I was very proud to give as a young 14-year-old. I have a resolution here, my colleagues will be voting on it later, but Ken Fields, I welcome you to the mic to say a few words, and then we'll have a performance from our lovely jazz artist. You have the floor.
Thanks so much, President Louie Jean and counselors, for giving me a few minutes to speak. I'm Ken Field, the president of Jazz Boston. Since 2006, we've been advocating for the Boston-area jazz community of musicians, audiences, venues, and media. We currently have over 4,600 members, about 60% of them open our monthly newsletters on a regular basis. They're all engaged and passionate about this important music, and it's important music not just because it's a music we enjoy and play. Jazz was created in the African-American community, as was just stated, the African-American community of New Orleans, and we think it's valuable to shine an ongoing spotlight on that history. And jazz is a somewhat unique musical style in that it focuses on spontaneous improvisation, giving it a powerful energy. Boston's played and continues to play a central role in the history of jazz. The music has spread from the U.S. across the globe. Jazz Boston is proud to bring you this afternoon a short performance by the Cuban-born composer, pianist, bandleader, and educator, Boston resident, Zaili Gonzalez Zamora. Zaili will play a composition called "Perro Por Que" by the important 19th-century Cuban composer Manuel Sommel. The title means "But Why," a very good question these days, and the piece is in the style known as contradansa, which evolved into other styles, including the mambo and the cha-cha. Please enjoy, and if you'd like to be informed about Jazz Boston's activities, please sign up for free membership at jazzboston.org.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Zahila, will you, you are welcome to play, and then afterwards, I'll have my colleagues come up for a photo. Thank you. Okay, let's go down there, let's go down there. And if my colleagues could stay, if my colleagues could say, "Jin Min," we could gather from the two of them. I now call up my colleague, thank you again, Jazz. Boston, to Ken and to Zahila, thank you for that wonderful presentation, that wonderful performance. I will now call up Counselor Weber for his presentation. Counselor Weber, you have the floor. Joined by Counselor Durkin.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, Counselor Durkin and I are presenting a resolution titled "Resolution in Support of House Bill 2667 and Senate Bill 1586: An Act to Provide Public Safety Telecommunicators with the Same Internal Benefits as First Responders." We're presenting this to members of SEIU 888, who I'd like to call up to the dais now. And, yes, yep. And if there are, you know, any 911 dispatchers as well. Thank you. This body passed a resolution sponsored by myself and Counselor Durkin at our last meeting, recognizing National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week while acknowledging the crucial role that our 911 dispatchers, who are members of SEIU 888, play as the first line in emergency, in the emergency response process. Today's resolution is in support of two bills that would ensure that these dispatchers receive the same benefits as first responders by designating them as public safety employees rather than clerical or administrative staff. To anyone who doubts whether these heroic workers deserve to be treated as first responders, consider the situation where you are in danger. The very first thing you do is call 911, and no matter what language you speak, these workers keep Boston safe. Boston as a city has supported these workers, including Mayor Wu, who signed an executive order on this topic, with state partners such as my colleague Senator Mike Rush, you know, who has been pushing for, for better treatment for 911 dispatchers at the State House. I hope that we can get the job done. This resolution states that the Boston City Council supports these pieces of legislation and urges legislators at the State House to pass the bills. I would now like to turn it over to my co-sponsor of this, of this item, Counselor Durkin. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Weber, for recognizing the importance of these workers and our 911 call takers and dispatchers. At the last council meeting, was proud to support this, and also in September, September 13th, 2023, I filed a hearing order to review the mental health resources available to city workers, and that was out of a conversation that I had with Tony Landry from SEIU 888. Thank you so much for your leadership. What I learned is that during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, the amount of points of contact that these dispatchers had nearly doubled, and it's thanks to the support of these workers that our communities were able to carry on, and, and I'm just grateful of, for the massive impact they've had on, on our economy's ability to come back, our neighborhood, the well-being of our society. And on a personal level, I'm really passionate about the work that they've been doing to highlight mental health, given my family's experience with mental health. And I know behind every single point of contact is someone's worst night, and I'm just really excited to see these 911 call takers receive the support of the city council, but also for us to really get behind this critical legislation to really recognize the work they're doing in our communities. So I'll pass it back to Counselor Weber.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. I just want to thank the members of SEIU 888 who are here today, and I'm not sure if SEIU 888 President Tom McKeever or Tony Landry would like to say a few words.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Council President Louie Jean and, and, and city councilors for the opportunity. At this time, I'd like to recognize the dispatchers that we brought today from Somerville as well as BPD. Susan DeRosa.
Christine Cornelio.
Christine Cornelio, and Mike Shackford, our political director Anthony Landry, and our political organizer John Peevey. If I may, I have a quick statement on behalf of legislation filed with the Commonwealth. My name is Tom McKeever. I'm the president of SEIU Local 888, which represents thousands of municipal, state, early, and higher education workers across the Commonwealth. We also are incredibly proud to represent 911 emergency telecommunications in Boston, who field approximately 700,000 emergency calls in the city of Boston annually. We also proudly represent 911 emergency telecommunications across the Commonwealth, including state police, Somerville Dispatch, state 911, regional communication centers in Middleton and Milford, as well as many other 911 centers. Needless to say, the work is, that these incredible people provide for the communities is literally that of first responders. Long gone are the days where they utilized one computer and one handheld telephone to perform these jobs. In 2024, 911 emergency telecommunications are very much specialized profession, from communicating on multiple computers to provide services to our hearing impaired callers, to helping units locate ballistics using triangulated audio systems, to communicating through text to 911, as well as text to video, where 911 operators can send text links to cell locations for lost children, special needs members in our community, and even kidnapping victims. They perform all of this and more with a margin of error which is zero as lives are at stake. 25 other states have already recognized the work of these emergency professionals as that of a, of public safety and first responders. And there is also federal legislation put forth through the House and Senate from Congresswoman Norma Torres of California in 911 Saves Acts, and as well as Senator Amy Klobuchar in the Enhancing First Response Act, both of these pieces in legislation which reclassify 911 emergency telecommunications as protective service workers instead of their current classification as clerical workers. Why is this changing the classification of benefits so important to these workers? It will formally provide respect, dignity, and understand of the work that is truly performed. By doing so, it will help open doors and better access to grant funding, which will help across the board in performing their jobs in the most effective and healthiest which will help across the board in performing their jobs in the most effective and healthiest way. Crisis intervention and peer support and wellness initiatives are just some of the items that 911 emergency telecommunications currently have limited funding opportunities, but will flourish through this reclassification. Recruitment and retention, 911 has traditionally been a job that has nationwide staffing shortages. And post-2020, the national average is approximately 40% to 50% short staffing, and some are even greater, and up to 70%. This is leading to multiple mandates, overtime shifts, which is burning out the longest-tenured employees. Reclassification and respecting the work they perform, respect the action, is what entices our brightest young workforce into the field. I would like to thank Mayor Michelle Wu, who in 2024 signed an executive order having the city of Boston recognize these workers in operations at BPD, public safety, and recognizing them as first responders. The support of the mayor of the largest municipality in the Commonwealth is a massive step push for this legislation. And I would like to thank the Boston City Councilors as well in supporting this first responder legislation. And we are grateful for your support in taking the lead in the Commonwealth in support of this and all the legislation that we put forth. We essentially ask you to support this resolution, and, you know, we thank you for your leadership. If I may, if Political Director Anthony Landry, if he can give a couple of final words. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. I'll be very brief here. On a Boston level, coming from there, I worked there for 20 years in Boston 911 before I took this position. Most dispatchers, 80% of dispatchers identify as female across the country and in Boston. We have one of the most diverse workforces in the city of Boston in the operations division with at least 10 different languages spoken. We thank Mayor Wu for helping us create a language statement for them to celebrate the fact that they're able to effectively respond in a quicker fashion to the citizens of this city through the diversity that they have. And also, at the end of the day, the work that these people do has often been, I always call it the Wizard of Oz. They're behind the curtain. You never see what they do. But now we're here, and we're at a breaking point now. We know there's a staffing crisis that's been talked about for quite some time. And this is the first domino that will effectively serve not just the 911 division, but for the city of Boston. And I very much thank the city council for their time today in considering this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony, and President McKeever. You know, I'd like to invite my colleagues for a photo up front, if that's okay, Madam President.
Yeah, my colleagues, we could just take it here. Yeah, we will.
I was going to say, Tom is my top five political directors.
Thank you.
It's a hard thing to say, actually.
We're both big hyperdellum.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of April 10, 2024. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The minutes of the last meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from her Honorable Mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0740?
Docket number 0740.
Mr. Clerk, apologies. Will you read dockets number 0740 to 0743?
Docket number 0740, message in order for confirmation of the appointment of new constables authorized to serve civil process upon the filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1, 2024 and ending April 30, 2027. Docket number 0741, message in order for your confirmation of the renewal appointments of constables authorized to serve civil process upon the filing of their bonds for a period commencing May 1, 2024 and ending April 30, 2027. Docket number 0742, message in order for confirmation of the appointment of renewal inspectional services constables authorized to serve civil process upon filing of their bonds for a period commencing May 1, 2024 and ending April 30, 2027. And docket number 0743, message in order for confirmation of the appointment of new inspectional services constables authorized to serve civil process upon the filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1, 2024 and ending April 30, 2027.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This message in order is for the confirmation of a few dozen constables of the city of Boston who serve as civil officers. These constables have already been vetted, and the council hasn't typically taken votes on them in the past couple of terms. It's come to my attention that we should technically be taking a vote, but I'm asking that we suspend and pass these appointments so that these constables can continue doing their work. If any of my colleagues object to taking this vote today, I'd be happy to wait until next week to take a vote and share some more information about each of the few dozen constables on the list. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks suspension of the rules and confirmation of docket number 0740. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket number 0740 has been confirmed. Mr. Clerk, would you... The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks suspension of the rules and confirmation of docket number 0741. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket number 0741 appointment has been confirmed. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks suspension of the rules and confirmation of docket number 0742. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket number 0742 appointment has been confirmed. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks suspension of the rules and confirmation of docket number 0743. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket number 0743 has been confirmed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0744 and 0745?
Docket number 0744, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year 24 appropriation for the reserve of collective bargaining by $7,754,649 to provide funding for the Boston Police Department for the fiscal year 24 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the Boston Police Superior Officers Federation, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 29, 2024. Docket number 0745, message in order for a supplemental appropriation order for the Boston Police Department for fiscal year 24 in the amount of $7,754,649 to cover the fiscal year 24 costs contained within the collective bargaining units between the city of Boston and the Boston Superior Officers Federation. The terms of the contract are July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2025. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5%, 2%, 1%, and 2.5% to be given in July of each fiscal year of the contract term, as well as the addition of the Transitional Career Award Program in July 2023. The contract also contains reforms relating to discipline, officer return to duty, pay detail system, and union release.
Thank you. Dockets number 0744 and 0745 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0746?
Docket number 0746, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $3 million in the form of a grant for the Multilingual Digital Experience Grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Administration and Finance, to be administered by the Department of Innovation and Technology. The grant will fund the development of programs and services that improve the experience of digital government services for multilingual communities.
Thank you. Docket number 0746 will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0747?
Docket number 0747, notice was received from Council President Liu Zhen of the appointment of Counsel Benjamin Weber as the city council representative on the Residency Compliance Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2026.
Thank you. Docket number 0747 will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0748 through 0751?
Docket number 0748, communication was received from the Office of Blackmail Advancement on the report entitled Mayor's Office of Blackmail Advancement Quarterly Report, January 1, 2024 through March 31, 2024. Docket number 0749, communication was received from Timothy J. Smith, Executive Officer of the Boston Retirement Board, relative to the fiscal year 25 retiree cost of living adjustment, also known as COLA vote. The docket number 0750, communication was received from Timothy J. Smith, Executive Officer of the Boston Retirement Board, regarding the fiscal year 25 retiree cost of living adjustment base vote. Docket number 0751, communication was received from Scott Finn, City Auditor transmitting a list of the fiscal '24 reallocations made by the mayor prior to April 15, 2024, for the purpose of continuing operations. Docket number 0752, notice was received from City Council President Liu Zhen of the appointment of Counsel Liz Brain as the city council representative on the Neighborhood Housing Trust for a term expiring January 1, 2026.
Mr. Clerk, one moment. Thank you. Dockets number 0748 through 0752 will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0753 and 0754?
Docket number 0753, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of April 3, 2024. Docket number 0754, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979, relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of April 10, 2024.
Thank you. Dockets number 0753 and 0754 will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0755?
Docket number 0755, communication was received by the city clerk from the Boston Landmarks Commission for City Council Action on the Designation of the Putman Nail Factory, George Lawley &amp; Sons Shipyard, 12-12 R Erickson Street, Boston, Mass., as a landmark, and in effect after June 1, 2024, if not acted upon.
Thank you. Docket number 0755 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0756?
Docket number 0756, communication was received from Counsel Brian Worrell, Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means Regarding the Boston Public Schools Fiscal Year '25 Budget.
Thank you. Docket number 0756 will be placed on file. We are now on to reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0503?
Docket number 0503, the Committee on Community Preservation Act, to which was referred on March 13, 2024. Docket number 0503, message in order for an appropriation order in the amount of $38,277,047 from fiscal year 2024 Community Preservation Fund revenues for community preservation projects at the recommendation of the City of Boston Community Preservation Committee. submits a report recommending that the docket ought to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Community Preservation Act, Counsel Pepe. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. On April 11, the Committee on Community Preservation Act held a hearing on docket number 0503. We were joined by Council colleagues Counsel Liu Zhen, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Weber, Counsel Fitzgerald, Santana, and Durkin. Director of the Community Preservation Office, Thaddeus Brown, led the administration panel consisting of Chief of the Mayor's Office of Housing Sheila Dillon, Commissioner of Parks and Recreation Ryan Woods, and a Senior Deputy Treasurer for the Boston Treasury Department Maureen Garcia. Ms. Brown stated that over $154 million has been granted to 290 projects in all of Boston's neighborhoods since the act was adopted. It was further explained that with approval of the current request, the total awarded funds will surpass $193 million across 347 projects since 2018. This year, the CPC has recommended funding for reviewed over 95 applications, held 10 public meetings, and recommended 37 out of the 57 projects for full funding in 19 different neighborhoods. The funding distribution for these projects would be 49% for affordable housing, 25% for historic preservation, and 26% for open space and recreation. These projects will positively impact Boston's neighborhoods and communities. I want to put forth a motion to vote in passage of the fiscal year 2024 Community Preservation Fund revenues for community preservation projects at the recommendation of the City of Boston's Community Preservation Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and congratulations on your first CPC offering before the city council. A lot of laudable projects for us to be pushing forward. Thank you, Counsel Pepe. The Chair of the Committee on Community Preservation Act seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0503. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report on docket number 0503 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0342, number 0504, and number 0577 together?
Docket number 0342, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on February 12, 2024. Docket number 0342, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,705,475.12 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year '24 Senator Charles E. Shannon Jr. Community Safety Initiative awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund regional and multidisciplinary approaches to combat gang violence through coordinated prevention and intervention, law enforcement, prosecution, and reintegration programs. submits a report recommending that the docket ought to pass. Docket number 0504, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on March 13, 2024. Docket number 0504, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $44,100 in the form of a grant for the Boston Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed through the Boston Public Health Commission to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund BPD's ability to support the project with relevant crime data reporting, and if available, assign a BPD representative to participate with CVI PI Planning Advisory Committee. submits a report recommending that the docket ought to pass. And docket number 0577, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on March 27, 2024. Docket number 0577, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $84,000 in the form of a grant for fiscal year '24 CISM grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund access to critical incident stress management and peer support programs to address mental wellness and suicide prevention for BPD officers. submits a report recommending that the docket ought to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a public hearing on three public safety grants, docket number 0342, docket number 0504, and docket number 0577 on Friday, April 12, 2024. We were joined by Councilors Aaron Murphy, Ed Flynn, Benjamin Weber, and Sharon Durkin. The committee also received a letter of absence from Council President Ruzy Liu Zhen. The committee heard testimony from Boston Police Department and Boston Public Health Commission officials responsible for managing these three grants, including Demon Bills, who was the project coordinator for the Shannon Grant. who is the project coordinator for the Shannon Grant, Boston Police Lieutenant Brian McManus, Tanya Morales, who is the Director of Violence and Intervention and Prevention Initiative with BPHC, and Sergeant Joseph King, Director of BPD Peer Support and Family Assistance Unit. Docket number zero three four two is a grant funding of one million, seven hundred and five thousand, four hundred and seventy-five, twelve cents for the Boston Police Department's FY twenty-four Senator Shannon Jr. Community Safety Initiative Program. This grant investment initiative supports the City of Boston's comprehensive strategy using regional and multidisciplinary approaches and collaborations amongst various state and city agencies, and also partnerships with faith-based philanthropics and business organizations with the community, specifically targeting hotspots areas in the City of Boston. The grant is used to reduce gang violence through coordinated prevention and intervention, law enforcement, prosecution, and reintegration programs aimed at reducing gun, gang, and youth violence in the city. The BPD project coordinator, Demon Bills, testified in support of the funding for the FY twenty-four Senator Charles Shannon Jr. Community Safety Initiative. Mr. Bill stated that in 2015, the BPD began an annual competitive bid process to apply for the Shannon Grant, opening the grants to all nonprofits and allowing funds to be granted to organizations with vested community interests in addressing and responding to youth violence through a variety of different methods. He explained that BPD receives about fifty applications and funds twenty organizations, and described the resources in organizations that the funding supports. Mr. Bills reported that since its inception in 2006 to the end of 2023, BPD has seen a sixteen percent decrease in homicides, a nine percent decrease in aggravated assaults, and a ten percent decrease in total violent crime, all through the investment of three hundred and fifty dollars per young person, and that specifically in the geographic areas covered by programs that this grant funds. Mr. Bill explained that this grant initiative is to provide programs and resources that serve positive youth development and recreational activities. The committee also heard testimony from a representative of the Boston Centers for Youth and Families, BCYF, about the importance of this funding to support programs to prevent violence and its positive impact on Boston's youth. Docket number zero five zero four is a grant in the amount of forty-four thousand, forty-four thousand, a hundred from the Boston Public Health Commission to be administered by the Boston Police Department for the Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Program. The grant will fund an interim position with BPD's Office of Research and Development, who will work in coordination with the Boston Public Health Commission Project Coordinator on the implementation of the CVIPI project. BPD will provide a relevant crime data collection, analysis, and reporting, and more in support of the Boston CVIPI, and assign a BPD representative to participate with CVIPI Planning and Advisory Committee. Director Tanya Morales of the BPD Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative testified that this grant supports a comprehensive, evidence-based violence and intervention program based on partnerships amongst community members, residents, local governments, agencies, victim survivors, community-based organizations, law enforcements, hospitals, researchers, and other community stakeholders. She reported that in FY twenty-three, the Boston Police Commission was awarded two million over the course of three years. She indicated that this initiative seeks to prevent and reduce violent crimes in Boston's neighborhoods of Roxbury, Dorchester, and Matapan by engaging returning citizens in programming that addresses their needs and strengthens the support of the family, caregivers, and other community connections necessary for their successful reentry back into the communities. Sergeant Joseph King testified on docket number zero five seven seven, a grant of eighty-four thousand dollars for the Boston Police Department for FY twenty-four Critical Incident Stress Management, CISM Grant Program. Now it is in the second year this grant program assists municipal police departments in delivering critical services to police officers and other responders in the event of traumatic incidents. Sergeant King reported that the resources provided through this grant supports crisis intervention, suicide prevention, and vital other services for members of our law enforcement in the aftermath of a traumatic incident, noting that police officers have the highest risk of dying from suicide. He highlighted that this program invests in the well-being of the officers and, by extension, their families and the communities they serve. Sergeant King highlighted that this initiative is a vetted and proven program. As Chair of Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend moving the listed dockets from the committee to the full council for discussion and a formal action. At that time, my recommendation to the full council will be dockets number zero three four two, number zero five zero four, and number zero five seven seven, all to pass. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Councilor Santana. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number zero three four two. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee -- Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number zero three four two. Councilor Brayden.
Yes.
Councilor Brayden, yes. Councilor Coletta.
Yes.
Councilor Coletta, yes. Councilor Durkin. Councilor Durkin, yes. Councilor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Councilor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Councilor Fitzgerald, yes. Councilor Flynn.
Yes.
Councilor Flynn, yes. Councilor Louis Jean.
Yes.
Councilor Louis Jean, yes. Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, yes. Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy, yes. Councilor Peppin.
Yes.
Councilor Peppin, yes. Councilor Santana.
Yes.
Councilor Santana, yes. Councilor Weber.
Yes.
Councilor Weber, yes. And Councilor Worrell.
Yes.
Councilor Worrell, yes. Docket number zero three four two has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number zero five zero four. Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number zero five zero four. Councilor Brayden.
Yes.
Councilor Brayden, yes. Councilor Coletta.
Yes.
Councilor Coletta, yes. Councilor Durkin.
Yes.
Councilor Durkin, yes. Councilor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Councilor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Councilor Fitzgerald, yes. Councilor Flynn.
Yes.
Councilor Flynn, yes. Councilor Louis Jean.
Yes.
Councilor Louis Jean, yes. Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, yes. Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy, yes. Councilor Peppin.
Yes.
Councilor Peppin, yes. Councilor Santana.
Yes.
Councilor Santana, yes. Councilor Weber.
Yes.
Councilor Weber, yes. And Councilor Worrell.
Yes.
Councilor Worrell, yes. Docket number zero five zero four has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. The committee report on docket number zero five zero four has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number zero five seven seven. Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number zero five seven seven. Councilor Brayden.
Yes.
Councilor Brayden, yes. Councilor Coletta.
Yes.
Councilor Coletta, yes. Councilor Durkin.
Yes.
Councilor Durkin, yes. Councilor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Louis Jean.
Yes.
Council Louis Jean, yes. Council Mejia. Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy. Council Murphy, yes. Council Peppin.
Yes.
Council Peppin, yes. Council Santana.
Yes.
Council Santana, yes. Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Weber, yes. And Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Docket number zero five seven seven has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. The committee report on docket number zero five seven seven has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number zero two eight zero?
Docket number zero two eight zero. The Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on February seventh, 2024. Docket number zero two eight zero. Message in order for your approval, an appropriation order in the amount of one million, two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars for the Cemetery Division of the Parks and Recreation Department and the Trust Office of the Treasury Department to be funded from the Cemetery Trust Fund, established under Chapter thirteen of the Acts of nineteen sixty-one. Submits a report recommending that the docket ought to pass.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Worrell. Councilor Worrell, you have the floor on docket number zero two eight zero.
Thank you, Chair. The Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing on April seventeenth for docket number zero two eight zero, featuring testimonies from Thomas Sullivan, General Superintendent of Semataries, and Margaret Dyson, Director of the Trust Division. The request was for one million, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand from the Cemetery Trust Fund for maintenance and improvements across three city cemeteries, Mount Hope, Fairview, and Evergreen. Key expenditures include seven hundred and thirty-five thousand for fence repairs at Mount Hope, two hundred and fifty thousand for digitizing cemetery records, and two hundred and seventy-five thousand for tree maintenance across the sites. Cemetery Division manages nineteen cemeteries totaling about two hundred and seventy acres, with three active ones hosting six to seven hundred burials annually. The fund, part of roughly three hundred and fifty city trusts, supports vital operations with about nine hundred thousand available annually for spending. Discussions also discovered veteran burials, future burial capacity, and as Chair of Ways and Means Committee, I recommend this docket ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number zero two eight zero. Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number zero two eight zero. Councilor Brayden.
Yes.
Councilor Brayden, yes. Councilor Coletta.
Yes.
Councilor Coletta, yes. Council Durkin.
Yes.
Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Council Fernandez Anderson, yes. Council Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Louis Jean.
Yes.
Council Louis Jean, yes. Council Mejia. Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Peppin.
Yes.
Council Peppin, yes. Council Santana.
Yes.
Council Santana, yes. Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Weber, yes. And Council Worrell.
Yes.
Council Worrell, yes. Docket number zero two eight zero has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. The committee report on docket number zero two eight zero has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number zero five eight two?
Docket number zero five eight two. The Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on March twenty-seventh, 2024. Docket number zero five eight two. Home rule petition for a special law regarding an act to amend the training requirement for the Fire Department Cadet Program in Boston. Submits a report recommending that the docket ought to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Councilor Coletta. Councilor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Docket zero five eight two is a home rule petition to amend Chapter two four two of the Acts of 2020, an act creating a Fire Department Cadet Program in the City of Boston. The legislative intent of this home rule petition is to increase the pool of candidates for the Boston Fire Department to reach necessary staffing levels. The petition seeks to do so by amending the special law to reduce the number of years required to serve as a cadet prior to being terminated from the program for age or appointment to the department. This home rule petition reduces the number of years from two to one years, to one year. Currently, Section one of Chapter two four two of the Acts of 2020 states, "No person shall be too old for appointment as a cadet if the person was of qualifying age at the time of application to a cadet program. An appointment to a cadet program shall not be terminated for age unless the cadet has completed two years of service." The home rule petition proposes to amend this section to read as follows. "No person shall be too old for appointment as a cadet if the person was of qualifying age at the time of application to a cadet program. An appointment to a cadet program shall not be terminated for age unless the cadet has completed one year of service." Further, Section two of Chapter four to four of the Acts twenty states, "Any person who has completed not less than two years of service as a fire cadet under this act may, subject to a program established by the Fire Commissioner of the City of Boston and approved by the Personnel Administrator of the Human Resources Division within the Executive Office for Administration and Finance, be appointed to fill a vacancy in a position in the lowest grade in the Fire Force of the City of Boston without certification from an eligible list prepared under said Chapter thirty-two, the Civil Service Law." The home rule petition proposes to amend this section to read, I'll just say, to change it from two years to one year. We held a hearing on April seventeenth, 2024. I was joined by Councilors Louis Jean, Flynn, Murphy, Fitzgerald, Brayden, lead sponsor Worrell, Fernandez Anderson, Mejia, and Durkin. Paul Burke, the Fire Commissioner and Chief of the Boston Fire Department, and Michael Gaskins, Diversity Recruitment Officer for the Boston Fire Department, testified on behalf of the administration. The committee also heard testimony from Electro Tavares, President of the Boston Vulcan Society, and Sam Dillon, President of Local Seven Eighteen, and Leroy Hayward, Vice President of Local Seven Eighteen. Testimony on behalf of the administration advocated for the amendment, stating that cadets are ready and qualified after one year. It was stated that amending the special law in the proposed manner would advance quality candidates more quickly, ease financial challenges associated with low salaries for cadets, promote a more diverse workforce, and strengthen the pipeline of Boston residents to the Fire Department. Testimony on behalf of the Boston Vulcan Society supported the proposed amendment and emphasized the need for alternative pathways to the Fire Department. Testimony on behalf of Local Seven Eighteen clarified that they do not oppose the cadet program. However, they expressed hesitancy in supporting an amendment of this kind and emphasized the importance of ensuring that the program is achieving its intended goals and that cadets are receiving adequate training and vetting before becoming firefighters. In response to these safety concerns, Commissioner Burke expressed strong confidence in the readiness and skills of the cadets in the cadet program. It was highlighted that the cadets are well-trained, knowledgeable about the department, and respectful of authority. The commissioner emphasized that the cadets would be top performers in the fire academy due to their training and experience, and are more prepared than new recruits coming from the civil service list because of their extensive exposure to fire department operations. It was stated that the cadets are fantastic individuals who reflect positively on the city with their intelligence and ambition and will prove the program's worth. Counselors expressed, some counselors expressed support as well as their interest in the proposal and sought clarification on various aspects, including potential benefits of the amendment, the impact the amendment would have on other applicants, as well as diversity within the department, and clarification on what the selection process for cadets would be following this amendment. Counselors and panelists discussed the history and basic operations of the cadet program. Counselors and panelists also discussed the Boston Fire Department's adherence to the Massachusetts Civil Service Law for hiring practices and how the cadet program was established to create an alternative pathway for Boston residents. It was explained that the Fire Cadet Program was created by a special law in two thousand and nineteen, aiming to recruit Boston residents eighteen to twenty-five, providing on-the-job training and civilian duties at BFD Headquarters and firehouses. Further, it was explained that cadets may receive preference for up to thirty-three percent of the upcoming fire recruit class after completing the program, and that the current salary for cadets is thirty-two thousand dollars a year for two years. Testimony highlighted the two-year commitment as a potential barrier to retaining cadets who might seek other opportunities to low pay. And so, just to summarize, excuse me, just to summarize, and then I'll pass it over to the lead co-sponsor if you'd like to make comments. These cadets are trained professionals who are ready to serve the city and keep residents safe. They are local city kids who are interested in pursuing a noble profession. I had the pleasure of speaking to a couple of cadets at the Charleston Coffee Hour, one of whom is the stepson of a local representative, who recounted their hard work and dedication to the program, but expressed hardships and their current economic situation. They just want to be given the opportunity to enter the academy and prove themselves there that they are ready for the job. An existing arbitrary graduation date prevents qualified candidates from joining the department and limits their earning capacity for a full year. So I am pleased to bring forth this home rule petition that will allow individuals who are ready to simply be appointed to the academy for the final stages of training. I've also heard from folks that there are concerns of how this might affect disabled vets. The law still stands, Chapter thirty-one, Section twenty-six. The order is still disabled vets, then veterans, and then families of fallen veterans, and then thirty-three percent will also be going to the fire cadets. And actually, I just learned this morning that this current class is dominated by disabled veterans. Of forty-six, all but nine fall into that category. So again, I'm very honored to bring this forth and recommend my colleagues voting the affirmative, and I'll pass it over to the lead sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Coletta. The Chair recognizes Councilor Worrell. Councilor Worrell, you have the floor.[1706.01] Thank you, Chair Coletta. The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Chair Coletta, for hosting this hearing, and thank you to all the council members for being part of this discussion. This home rule petition is a pivotal shift towards making our Fire Department more accessible and reflective of the community it serves. We have a commitment to ensuring these cadet classes that are made up of, as we heard, Boston residents, BPS graduates, women, and veterans have a viable pathway to city jobs and to building the Fire Department that reflects our city. I know some have wondered why we are moving to a process that allows some cadets to move from the Fire Cadet Program to the academy after one year before we've even completed one two-year program. And the reason is because experts say the cream of the crop is ready. There's a similar program in place with the Police Academy that allows some cadets to join the academy after six months. Why make this change? Consider this. Cadets currently earn thirty-two thousand dollars a year, a salary far below what any member of this council or indeed any many city employees would consider sufficient. This isn't just a number, it's a barrier that prevents talented, driven individuals from serving our community. Our Fire Commissioner, Paul Burke, has voiced his strong support for this amendment. And by adjusting this training requirement, we give potential candidates a more appealing career trajectory in public service. The department has made efforts to diversify, but the truth remains that we have only scratched the surface. We need tools to allow us to broaden our reach, and this amendment is one tool. This is a straightforward step, one that helps connect BPS graduates and Boston residents to high-quality jobs while ensuring our Fire Department has access to capable, diverse candidates. We cannot wait to act on these commitments. This is a proven strategy that will create real pathways for our BPS graduates and Boston residents. And I urge and our colleagues on Beacon Hill to pass this during the current session. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Just want to thank you, Counselor Worrell, for your leadership, and Commissioner Burke, and Electra Tavares, Head of the Vulcans, for all their work in promoting the cadet program. The Chair recognizes, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number zero five eight two. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number zero five eight two, Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
No.
Counselor Fitzgerald, no. Counselor Flynn.
No.
Counselor Flynn, no. Counselor Louis Zen.
Yes.
Counselor Louis Zen, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
No.
Counselor Murphy, no. Counselor Pepin.
Yes.
Counselor Pepin, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number zero five eight two has received ten votes in the affirmative and three votes in the negative.
Thank you. Docket number zero five eight two has passed. Mr. Clerk, will you please read dockets number zero five seven three through zero five seven six?
Docket number zero five seven three, the Committee on Housing and Community Development, to which it was referred on March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Docket number zero five seven three, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of twenty million dollars in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year Twenty Four Community Development Block Grant. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket number zero five seven four, the Committee on Housing and Community Development, to which it was referred on March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Docket number zero five seven four, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of seven million dollars in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year Twenty Four Home Investment Partner. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Docket number zero five seven five, the Committee on Housing and Community Development, to which it was referred on March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Docket number zero five seven five, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of four million dollars in the form of a grant for the Fiscal Year Twenty Four Housing for Persons with AIDS, H O P W A. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. And docket number zero five seven six, the Committee on Housing and Community Development, to which it was referred on March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Docket number zero five seven six, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of two million dollars in the form of a grant for the Federal Fiscal Year Twenty Four Emergency Solution Grant. Submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden, Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Dockets zero five seven three, zero five seven four, zero five seven five, and zero five seven six. We reviewed these dockets in the Housing Committee, the Committee on Housing and Community Development, in a virtual hearing on Thursday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty four, regarding these four federal grants which were referred to the committee on March twenty seventh. Counselors in attendance included Counselor President Louis Zen, Counselors Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Flynn, Pepin, and Santana. We were joined by the city personnel representing departments expending the grant funds. Daniel Lesser, the Chief of Staff of the Mayor's Office of Housing, offered a presentation reviewing the grant programs. He was joined by Kathy Miranda, Senior Housing Development Officer in the Housing Stability at the Mayor's Office of Housing, Shania Fletcher, Director of Grow Boston, Karen Rabaza, Director of the Boston Home Center, Kathy Kehl Holloway, Senior Development Officer of the Support of Housing at the Mayor's Office of Housing, Tina Griffin, Griffith, sorry, Assistant Director of Compliance, Anna Share, Senior Project Manager of the Office of Workforce Development, Titania Joyce, Assistant Deputy Director of Grants and Procurement at the Office of Workforce Development, and Abigail Fury, Senior Neighborhood Business Manager at the Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion. The four grants totaled thirty-three million dollars and came from four federal programs: Community Development Block Grants, CDBG, Housing for Persons with AIDS, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. The grants fund a variety of housing-related activities such as economic development and social service programs, production of a new affordable rental and homeownership housing, operating support for community development organizations, services for income-eligible individuals and families affected by AIDS, street outreach, emergency shelters, homelessness prevention, and rapid rehousing assistance and shelter services. HUD requires a consolidated plan to be submitted every five years, and the Mayor's Office of Housing is currently in the community engagement for the Financial Year Twenty Five through Financial Year Twenty Nine Plan. As Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, I recommend that these dockets ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. The Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number zero five seven three. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report on docket number zero five seven three has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number zero five seven four. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report on docket number zero five seven four has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number zero five seven five. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report on docket number zero five seven five has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number zero five seven six. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report on docket number zero five seven six has passed. We are now on to matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read dockets number zero six seven zero through number through zero six seven eight.
Docket number zero six seven zero through zero six seven two, orders for the Fiscal Year Twenty Five operating budget, including annual appropriations for departmental operations for the school department and for other post-employment benefits, also known as OPIC. Docket numbers zero six seven three through zero six seven five, orders for capital grant fund credited appropriations. And docket numbers zero six seven six through zero six seven eight, orders for the capital budget, including loan orders and lease purchase agreements.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. As Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, we initiated the FY twenty-five budget season on April-
One moment, one moment, Counselor Worrell. If someone's, please silence your cell phones. Counselor Worrell, you may resume.
We started the FY twenty-five budget season on April twenty-second. I'm just going to give what feels like a long but brief overview on all the budget hearings we've had so far. We held a hearing on Monday, April twenty-second, to go over the operating budget overview. The season kicked off with the overview of the four-point-six-four billion-dollar operating budget focused on enhancing public services and in maintaining economic stability amid decreasing state aid and rising school costs. Discussions also covered revenue sustainability, post-pandemic, responsible capital planning, and cautious new growth revenue estimates, emphasizing strategic fiscal management. We held a public testimony hearing on the night of Monday, April twenty-seventh, twenty-second. We heard from advocates for funding on Katie's Closet, Lewis D. Brown Peace Institute, and youth employment. We held a hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-third, to go over the capital budget overview. The hearing addressed the proposed five-year capital plan totaling four-point-seven billion dollars, an increase of nearly five-hundred million dollars from the previous plan. The plan covers four-hundred-and-twenty-seven projects and programs across all neighborhoods, emphasizing facilities, transportation, safety, parks, and recreation, with funding mainly from geo-bonds supported by the city's triple-A bond rating. Discussions included the capital plan's financing, city debt management policies, and the implementation process for capital projects from initial studies to construction. Next, we held a hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-third, to go over the FY twenty-five budget for Office of Equity, Black Male Advancement, LGBTQ+ Advancement, and Women's Advancement. This session focused on equity and inclusion. Significant discussion included budget reallocations due to staffing changes, the Black Men and Boys Commission recommendations totaling about thirty-one million dollars, and plans for future equity studies and data collections to address diverse community needs. Other topics covered were strategies for generational wealth, combating housing discrimination, and supporting health-related initiatives for marginalized communities. We also held a hearing on Thursday, April twenty-fifth, to go over the FY twenty-five budget for Boston Transportation Department and Public Works Department. Discussions in this hearing addressed enhancing service delivery, promoting diversity within city leadership, and improving employee compensation. The city's efforts in community safety, infrastructure improvements, and waste management were also reviewed. Chief Franklin Hodge noted an increased investment in streets and sidewalks in the wake of the ten-motor-vehicle-related fatalities on Boston streets since mid-December. On Thursday, April twenty-fifth, we met at two P M. to go over the FY twenty-five budget for departments such as immigrant advancement, language and communication access, commission for persons with disabilities, Human Rights Commission, and Fair Housing. This hearing focused on enhancing support for immigrants, improving accessibility in city facilities, combating housing discrimination. The council considered strategies for better resource allocation for ESL classes, updates in accessibility improvements at key locations, and appropriate legal support for fair housing. On Monday, April twenty-ninth, at ten A M., we held a hearing to go over the Inspection Services Department, Property Management, and Public Facilities Department. The hearing highlighted issues from implementing recent council ordinances and challenges in permitting processes. Discussion also touched on the use of community engagement data and city planning and updates on enforcement of housing and building regulations. Moving on, on Monday, April twenty-ninth, at two P M., we held a hearing to go over the FY twenty-five budget for Boston Public Schools. This hearing primarily focused on inclusion, English-language learners, special education services, and universal pre-K. The discussion highlighted the need to address educational disparities with a significant focus on equitable budgeting to meet the specific needs of students on I E Ps. Concerns were raised about the district's plans for exclusive education and FY twenty-six plans for E L L, while the district highlighted the success for U P K program and explained this policy for students with I E Ps that are attending U P K programs. Yesterday, on Tuesday, April thirtieth, at ten A M., we held a hearing with Boston Public Schools to go over contracts, transportation, student supports, and experiences revolving funds. We heard from transportation about its new tracking system, which will be piloted over the summer and implemented in the fall. Additionally, the administration discussed improvements to school meals, the process for athletics and athletic transportation, and the need for more arts in our schools. Lastly, on Tuesday, April thirtieth, at two P M., we held a hearing with Boston Public Schools to go over curriculum, career and college pathways, vocational tech, and safety. We heard about the district's implementation of an investment in high-quality instructional materials. We also heard about the various upper school efforts to link students with college prep or careers upon graduation. We also discussed better ways to track our students' outcomes and track our school's success. Each hearing has brought forth crucial insights and discussions aimed at strengthening the city's governance and service delivery across various sectors. I want to thank all my council colleagues for showing up to all the hearings and making the budget process more collaborative. Also, I want to give a huge shout out to central staff, Shane, Karishma, and the whole team for their good work. And these orders will remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Worrell, for shepherding us through what I know is not an easy Ways and Means and budget process, and so thank you very much for that. Dockets number zero six seven two through zero six seven eight will remain in committee. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, we will be taking a docket out of order. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number zero seven seven zero?
Docket number zero seven seven zero, Counselor Fernandez Anderson offer the following. Resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I begin, I'd like to move to substitute the language. Two copies of the revised resolution, one with red-line edits and one finalizing the draft, should be on your desks. I just want to ensure that folks were very clear on the small changes. And the change really is just to, there was a mistake in terms of, instead of City of Boston, it should say Boston City Council, and you'll see that reflected in the language change. It's no secret that this is not the, this is my letter from Marahim, that this is not the first time that a resolution calling for ceasefire in Gaza has been filed in the council. Resolutions have been filed, refiled, put in green sheets, pulled out, and everything in between. But I don't think that that's a bad thing. If anything, I think it demonstrates the determination of this body to ensure that we have the capacity to work collaboratively on difficult issues. By working with advocates, community members, and interfaith organizations, we have worked to find the ways in which the Boston City Council can be most impactful. The resolution before you reflects that work. Our message is simple: all life is precious. And the time has come for us to stand up and call for an end to this senseless violence. I do believe that we need to hold space, perhaps separate from the council, to further unpack this issue. And I trust that we will do that with the same level of intentionality that has gone into this. Because that's thirteen individuals with different lived experiences, there is guaranteed to be nuances about how to address this harm. But as a body, we have got to stand up and at least say that enough is enough. We should move forward as a body with at least shared belief between all of us that this violence has to end. I want to thank the community members, the advocates, the youth, and interfaith leaders, my brothers and sisters in Israel who have been allies, the LGBTQI+ community who have been allies, my brothers and sisters, my Jewish brothers and sisters, my Muslims and Christians, and all faiths, all who have come forth to fight and to stand up for what is right. I want to thank my council colleagues for working with me on this today and prior, who have helped us to get here. And at this time, I would like to suspend the rules and pass this resolution. I would like to divide the questions so that we are very clear. The suspending just means that we'll take a vote today and another on adopting the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. The Chair, is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't planning on speaking on this matter, but I was originally thinking that the best place to deal with this issue would be in a committee hearing. After talking to Counselor Fernandez Anderson this morning, Counselor Fernandez Anderson requested a vote on this, and I also agreed to a vote, not have a committee hearing. What I wanted to focus on is I still believe that the City Council is not the right body to address this. We have critical issues facing the city, the budget, public safety challenges, getting our economy back on track. our economy back on track, neighborhood services. I'm going to be voting no, but I did want to give my colleagues the opportunity to vote up or down on this resolution, as I agreed to this morning with Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And also, thank you for our conversation earlier. I also will not be blocking the suspend and pass, and thank you for clarifying that the first one is to make sure we're going to a vote or not. And I know it's been said before when this resolution has been brought before this body, and I also wholeheartedly agree that all life is precious and war is horrible. But I am hearing, and I do just want to uplift, that Passover just ended yesterday, and I'm hearing from many Jewish residents, friends, family, that they were offline and this morning are just hearing about this resolution coming forward, so I do just want to put that out there, but will not be blocking this knowing that you wanted to go to a vote. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Councilor Weber. Councilor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, for bringing this important issue before the council. You know, I'm already on record as supporting a ceasefire in the Middle East, who is one of the first things that I worked on as a city councillor. You know, since I took office, I've heard from hundreds of constituents who want a ceasefire in Gaza and seen into the suffering. I've heard from Palestinians who live in my district, who, you know, are near tears and can't believe that this is happening and can't believe that, you know, US dollars are going, you know, toward suffering of their relatives. I've also heard from Jewish constituents who feel like, you know, their pain on October 7th hasn't been recognized, and some of them don't feel welcome in a neighborhood that they've lived in for over a decade. But I think that just highlights how we need to create a space for healing in Boston. And I will say, you know, I just, a family friend, we just, as Councilor Murphy pointed out, we just finished Passover last night. I just wanted to read a short prayer that a family friend of mine read at their Passover seder. "We pray for a cessation of the violence. We pray for our ability to hold in our hearts at the same time the suffering and pain of Palestinians and Israelis. We pray for the future of both peoples on this land, the acknowledgement of both peoples' right to live in justice and dignity. We pray that in all our trauma, our sorrow, our despair, that we don't harden our hearts or refuse to see what is happening before our eyes. We pray we preserve our humanity. We pray that in the horror of this moment, there will be an awakening and a realization that the only path forward is one of coexistence." I couldn't have said it any better myself. I will be voting yes that we should vote on this, and I will vote yes on the resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Weber. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Councilor Durkin. Councilor Durkin, you have the floor.
I wasn't planning to speak, and but, and I, when I thought about what I wanted to say, I wanted to say, we should be working on the streets, we should be working on all this, the things, you know, the basic mechanics of city government. But being here today, I see that this means a lot to my colleagues, so I'm going to vote yes today. But standing up for my Jewish constituents who have faced, who have faced harassment with everything going on in the world, I just want to acknowledge their pain, and I want to acknowledge that when my colleagues are hearing from their constituents that this is important to them, while I have previously said this is not the avenue for this, I respect my colleagues and I plan to vote yes today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Durkin. The chair recognizes Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, for offering this resolution today. I stand in support of this resolution, and I really, I hadn't planned on saying too much, but coming from Northern Ireland, and when the troubles, the war, whatever you want to call it, started in 1969, I was 10 years old. And I was here in Boston in 1998 when it all wrapped up, 30-something years of trauma and violence. I really, it is my hope and prayer that the ceasefire would be a beginning of a process of repair and reconciliation for all impacted by the violence in this region, including the advancement of the safety and dignity of all Israelis and Palestinians. A ceasefire in itself is not going to be the end. It is the beginning. End is the beginning of the beginning. I really feel, I applaud all those folks. I can understand the fear and the trauma that our communities are here in Boston, Palestinian community and the Jewish community are feeling. It is a difficult, very, very extremely difficult time. There's a huge amount of trauma, and I think that having a ceasefire, and then as colleagues and leaders in the city, we have to create spaces to hold, hold folks and offer spaces where we can start to heal the trauma and see each other's humanity. It's a very, very long road, but I do hope, and I think hope is the word, that having a ceasefire is opening a window to hope, that we can sort of go on a path towards more peaceful and harmonious future for the region. And, you know, in Northern Ireland, we never thought it was possible. It took 18 months to get to a peace agreement. That's a very, very fragile peace in Northern Ireland, and I just understand how fragile ceasefires are, but I also, with good faith, we should demonstrate an interest and support for finding a way forward that isn't a violent one. So, so thank you, and thank you, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, for offering this resolution once again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. The chair recognizes Councilor Coletta. Councilor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to thank the maker and recognize her courage for bringing this forward and working with colleagues to get to where we are today. I thought it was really important to rise to also denounce antisemitisms in the strongest, antisemitism in the strongest of terms, to denounce calls for the annihilation of Israel or attacks on Jewish people. Antisemitism is horrific, and we will not stand for it. But just like my council colleague, Councilor Durkin, said, we could acknowledge Jewish individuals' pain while also calling for an end of suffering for the Palestinian people and condemning the actions on October 7th, and calling on a release of hostages, which this resolution does. I've said it before, but violence begets violence. We should be standing up against any pain and suffering, which is why I will be voting in favor of this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Coletta. The chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to my colleagues who have already risen to speak. I wasn't going to speak either, but I think it's important to acknowledge that today we had our monthly prayer hour, and we had people praying from all walks of life in community with each other, and it was there that we really had a moment of recognizing the power of really being able to see each other despite all of our differences. And I think that this is one of those moments where we have to move beyond ourselves and recognizing the bigger picture here. And I think that as a body, especially in this moment in time, in this world that we are all walking in, that we recognize each other's humanity, and that we are able to offer each other a little bit of grace. And that at the end of the day, when we're able to live with love and compassion and the basic principles of humanity, only then is when we're able to really be able to work collectively. And I think this act really gets us a little bit closer to that. And I want to thank Councilor Anderson for her relentless courage to bring this back to us and give us an opportunity to work collaboratively, to get it to a good place. Because I think at the end of the day, no matter what side of the fence you sit on, we can all agree, we can all agree that it is time for us to say enough is enough, enough suffering, and come together here in the city of Boston and affirm the need for a ceasefire. And I will end with, I will end with recognizing how difficult it is for a lot of people to be in this room right now, and sitting in silence, and reflecting and wondering, and thinking about, and thinking about their own humanity. You know, they say that at the Thanksgiving table, you don't talk about politics or religion because those are the things that divide us. But here we are. This is an opportunity to call each other in and not each other out, and take a stance, and try to be the change that we all hope to be one day. Our children are watching, and we need to lead differently, and so I'm asking my colleagues to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I just want to echo, you know, we are a city council, we work on potholes in schools, and we're in the thick of budget season, and so our issues and our mandate is one of local issues. But there are times when we can't turn away, and I, as a Haitian American who is habitually bringing up the atrocities that are happening in Haiti, have to be able to speak about the atrocities that are happening in the Middle East committed by Hamas on October 7th. And to not be able to look away when I see videos of young kids in Gaza who have lost their siblings, who have lost their parents, who have lost everyone. There has to be an end to this violence. As many of you have alluded to, violence only begets more violence and is not the road to peace. There is no way that this short, eight-by-eleven resolution on one page is reflective of the diversity of opinions of a 13-member body. But it is saying that we collectively, as a body, want this to end. If no one else has anything to say on this matter, because Councilor Fernandez-Anderson requested that we divide the question, Mr. Clerk, we will first do a roll-call vote on agreement to suspend the rules. So, Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll-call vote on Councilor Fernandez-Anderson's desire to divide the vote? And first question for my colleagues is suspension of the rules pursuant to Rule 33.
Roll-call vote on docket number 0770, suspension of the rules. Councilor Braden.
Yes.
Councilor Braden, yes. Councilor Coletta.
Yes.
Councilor Coletta, yes. Councilor Durkin.
Yes.
Councilor Durkin, yes. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Councilor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Councilor Fitzgerald, yes. Councilor Flynn.
Yes.
Councilor Flynn, yes. Councilor Louzine.
Yes.
Councilor Louzine, yes. Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, yes. Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy, yes. Councilor Pepin.
Yes.
Councilor Pepin, yes. Councilor Santana.
Yes.
Councilor Santana, yes. Councilor Weber.
Yes.
Councilor Weber, yes. And Councilor Worrall.
Yes.
Councilor Worrall, yes. On the suspension of rules, the unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson seeks passage of docket number 0770. Will you please conduct a roll-call vote?
Docket number 0770, Councilor Braden.
Yes.
Councilor Braden, yes. Councilor Coletta.
Yes.
Councilor Coletta, yes. Councilor Durkin.
Yes.
Councilor Durkin, yes. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Councilor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Councilor Fitzgerald, yes. Councilor Flynn.
No.
Councilor Flynn, no. Councilor Louzine.
Yes.
Councilor Louzine, yes. Councilor Mejia.
Yes.
Councilor Mejia, yes. Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy, no. Councilor Pepin.
Yes.
Councilor Pepin, yes. Councilor Santana.
Yes.
Councilor Santana, yes. Councilor Weber.
Yes.
Councilor Weber, yes. And Councilor Worrall.
Yes.
Councilor Worrall, yes. Docket number 0770 has received 11 votes in the affirmative and two in the negative.
Thank you. Docket number 0770 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0757? Thank you, there are, okay. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0757?
Docket number 0757, Councilor Louzine offered the following: Resolution recognizing April 30th, 2024 as International Jazz Day.
There is, there is no, there is no speaking, there is no speaking on the council floor other than my council colleagues. Mr. Clerk, can you please finish reading? There is no speaking in council chambers except for my council colleagues and council staff. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number, finish reading docket number 0757?
Docket number 0757, Councilor Louzine offered the following: Resolution recognizing April 30th, 2024 as International Jazz Day.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'll just speak on this from here. This is a resolution recognizing April 30th as International Jazz Day. Councilor Worrall, Council President Louzine seeks suspension of the rules. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Pepin, Santana, Weber, Worrall. Council President Louzine seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0757. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you, docket number 0757 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0758?
Docket number 0758, Councilor Pepin offered the following: A petition for a special law on an age waiver for the maximum age requirement for Sherrell Melais to join the Boston Police Department.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Pepin. Councilor Pepin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Sherrell Melais is a 44-year-old woman born in Boston, living in High Park. After over a decade working for Boston EMS and prior as a private investigator, she wants to become a Boston police officer, having worked with the force in multiple instances. She studied criminal justice and criminology after being medically discharged from the U.S. Marine Corps. Again, just another resident of Boston that is looking to serve on the police department and is asking for an age waiver because she's past the age to be able to serve, but that's it.
Thank you, Councilor Pepin. I missed whether, is it, are you seeking suspension of the rules? Are you sending this to committee?
Sending this to committee.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Durkin, Flynn. Are you, is your, is your hand up? Pepin, Santana, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrall, please add the chair. Docket number 0758 will be referred to Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number, oh, I'm sorry, was your mic on to speak? Would you like to speak? Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you to Councilor Pepin. I just had a quick question. I thought you mentioned, is this person a veteran?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. No, that's all I needed to, that's all I needed to know, Madam Chair, and I just want to acknowledge and thank Councilor Pepin for supporting this initiative, but also supporting a Marine that plays a critical role in our community. Thank you, Councilor Pepin.
Thank you. Docket number 0758 will be sent to Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0759?
Docket number 0759, Councilor Santana and Coletta offered the following: Ordinance for safe and healthy hotels in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Santana. Councilor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask to suspend Rule 12 and add Councilor Durkin as a third original co-sponsor.
Councilor Santana seeks suspension of the rules, add Councilor Durkin as an original third co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Councilor Durkin is so added. Councilor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Over 20 million people visit our Boston hotels every year, and we have almost 100 licensed hotels here in Boston, particularly today on International Workers' Day. I'd like to acknowledge our hotel workers who make our Boston hotels truly some of our best in the world. We know our We know our hotel workers are burdened with a lot, including keeping each and every one of those 20 million Boston hotel visitors every year safe and healthy. Hotels and hotel workers are the first to encounter and respond to many public health and public safety issues. And our hotel workers are often from low-income and immigrant backgrounds, and they're forced to face these heavy situations, often with minimal guidance. We're putting an at-risk population further at risk. Our hotels and our hotel workers need better support and training resources, and this ordinance will provide just that. The ordinance would establish a Safe and Healthy Hotels Advisory Panel, comprised of seven public health and safety experts chosen by the Boston Public Health Commission, the Boston Police Department Human Trafficking Unit, the Inspection Services Department, and the Licensing Board, along with a Boston Hotel Labor Expert chosen by the Unite Here Local 26 Union. The panel will support hotels in implementing and training their workers on procedures to address key public health and safety issues, including identifying and preventing human trafficking, preventing overdoses, reducing instances of bedbugs, lice, mold, and other parasites and infectious agents, worker and guest safety with cleaning chemicals, and conducting guest room safety checks. We know the importance of these measures from data. In addressing human trafficking, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security notes, and I quote, "Human traffickers often take advantage of the privacy and anomaly offered by the hospitality industry." And traffickers, quote, "can operate discreetly because staff and guests may not know the science of human trafficking." This is a problem we can and must solve. We need to support our hotels and hotel workers with training to recognize the science of human trafficking and with clear procedures to follow for how to respond in a way that keeps hotel workers safe while identifying and protecting victims. We also know that substance use and the risk of overdoses are universal problems that don't just disappear in hotels. In 2022 and 2023, the Boston Police Department responded to 241 calls at hotels related to sick and assist and sick and assist drug-related illness. Supporting our hotel workers with training to identify and respond to potential substance use and overdoses is necessary to reduce deaths and serious illness. And every day, hotel cleaning staff work hard to maintain excellent standards and prevent parasites and infectious agents. Too often, we're asking them to do too much. This ordinance will support them by setting a maximum limit on how many square feet a hotel worker can be forced to clean in a day. Similar laws have been enacted in Los Angeles, Seattle, Irvin, and other locations to ensure healthy cleaning practices are upheld in those cities' hotels. The ordinance would also ensure hotels and workers are equipped with clear guidance on safely and handling and using of cleaning chemicals. A tremendous amount of work has gone into shaping this ordinance and practical approach to supporting our hotels. I want to thank the Boston Public Health Commission, ISD, and the Licensing Board for collaborating repeatedly with my office over the past several weeks to craft this ordinance approach. And I particularly want to thank Megan Cabanau from Central Staff for your work supporting our office in researching and drafting this ordinance. It's well deserved that we get to drop the interim from your title today and fully recognize you as our Central Staff Compliance Director.
There's no clapping in chambers, but okay.
I would also like to thank my Director of Communications and Policy, Matthew Brody, for all the work that he's done to put this together. I also want to thank my original co-sponsors, Counsel Coletta and Counsel Durkin. I would also like to acknowledge Counsel Flynn and Counsel Weber for both reaching out in support of this ordinance as well. And for Counsel Flynn, for all the years of work that you've done to secure that hotels are safe and healthy. I know these are important topics for all of our colleagues, and I'm looking forward to continuing our work on this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Santana. The chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy May Day, everybody. Happy International Workers' Day. As the granddaughter and niece of hotel workers, I'm very proud to co-sponsor this with you, Counselor Santana. Thank you to your team, and thank you Counsel Durkin, and to Local 26 for all of the hard work thus far. What we're trying to accomplish here is to codify through law regulations that hotels must abide by in doing so through a really savvy vehicle that was developed by you and your team, but through the Boston Public Health Commission and the vehicle of their broad enforcement powers. We are seeking to combat human trafficking, prevent overdoses, protect individuals with substance use disorder, and address health hazards through cleaning standards and chemical safety. Hotel workers are the first on the scene to encounter public health and safety issues. They're often immigrants, speak English as a second language, and haven't been given adequate support by their company due to the fact that it is not mandated. In fact, proper protocols and procedures to address some of these issues are inconsistent with varying degrees of investment and training. Especially as it relates to human trafficking, abusers often take advantage of hotels to victimize young women. They especially take advantage of hotel staff that are not trained to see obvious signs of trafficking, thus perpetuating the cycle of abuse. This ordinance seeks to mandate and standardize training and establishes a reporting structure to ensure it's taking place. We've also heard from hotel workers of unattainable cleaning standards, and so we set a limit on maximum square footage that a worker can be forced to clean each day. This will lead to better outcomes and more opportunities for employment for more Boston residents. We have the opportunity to be one of the first municipalities in the country to get this done. It's incumbent upon all of us to uphold the highest standards of cleanliness, workplace dignity, and public safety. These regulations take a public health approach to protect employees, human trafficking victims, as well as residents and visitors of Boston. Thank you so much, and I look forward to the forthcoming conversations in committee.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. The chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair. And thank you so much to Counselor Santana and Counselor Coletta for your work on this. I'm so honored to co-sponsor this important legislation. We have the obligation to ensure safe conditions within Boston's hotel stock. Creating a regulatory mechanism for oversight and compliance of hotel safety conditions makes every single one of us safer, particularly our most vulnerable populations, including women, immigrants, and the unhoused. By partnering with law enforcement and empowering our hotel workforce with proper training, our hotels can provide safety for all. The advisory panel is a particularly important part of this, and it would establish consistent protocols for cleaning of hotel rooms and public hotel facilities to reduce and address instances of bedbugs, lice, mold, and other parasites and infectious agents, including setting maximum limits of how many square feet a hotel worker can be forced to clean in a day. The panel, the advisory panel experts would also provide hotels with guidance on the impacts and effects of commonly misused substances, including opioids, identifying signs, and responding to overdose, and how to approach hotel guests with substance abuse disorder. These are all really important parts of this ordinance. I'm just so grateful to Counselor Santana for your work. This is incredibly important. And I want to uplift and thank the work of our hotel workers and Local 26 and everything they do every day to ensure that our hotel workers are given a fair shake in everything that they do. And this ordinance is a really important part of making sure that our hotel workers are within safe working conditions and that everyone who stays at a hotel has access to those same safe conditions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And please add my name. I also want to acknowledge Counsel Mejia for the important work that you've done in support of hotel workers for many years, whether it was for decent wages, safe working conditions, dignity in retirement. But what this resolution, what this proposal here is, is an exceptional, well-written document that will provide justice, that will provide dignity to our hotel workers. Many of them, I'm proud to say, live in my district. And many of them are women and immigrants, and they helped build this city. And they contribute greatly to Boston, the first people usually a tourist will see when they come to Boston, as many times people from the hotel industry, including the cleaners. And they deserve to work in dignity. And I think this is what this proposal will continue to do, is to ensure that our hotel workers are treated with respect and dignity. And that's what Boston's all about. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you to the lead sponsors for this. And I know all my colleagues, well, I'll assume that we're all going to be supporting this. Oftentimes, you apply and you start to work in the hotel industry. You go in to do one job, and you are forced to do a very different one. And you're paid to do one job, which isn't always enough. So making sure that we're uplifting those needs would just suggest we may loop in the DA's office. I've met with them several times, and they do a lot of work around the human trafficking. And I know Counsel Durkin mentioned also the overdoses, that it's never been. In the budgets, we've been talking with the school department. Oftentimes, our parent liaisons are hired to do one thing, but are expected to do so much more. And in this case, our hotel workers are. So hoping that through this, we can support them and get this right. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank my colleagues. I'm really super excited to move this work along. Counsel Flynn and I, in one of the early things that we had filed here, and COVID came, so then we started focusing on COVID-related issues. But one of the things that I was really interested in doing is looking at this conversation, not just in hotel workers, but also there's a lot of massages and other spaces and places that are also taking advantage of our immigrant workers and particularly those who are undocumented, specifically around human trafficking. And I think that as we're looking at this conversation, I think we are well positioned to look at other spaces and places that situations that occur should be looked at as well. So looking forward to having the conversation.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I want to thank my colleagues for putting this forward, protecting our hotel workers is paramount. They are too often put in dangerous positions. So I look forward to supporting this as it works through the Government Operations Committee. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Fernando Anderson, Fitzgerald, Murphy, Pepin, Weber, Worrell, myself. Counsel Flynn had asked to add his name as well. Docket number 0759 will be sent to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0760?
Docket number 0760, Counsel Flynn offered the following. Order for a hearing to discuss plans to address drag racing, dirt bikes, ATVs, and other off-road vehicles on neighborhood streets.
Is he coming back in? No. Okay, let's read docket number 0761, Mr. Clerk. We'll come back to 0760 once Counsel Flynn is back in chambers.
0761, Counsel Mejia offered the following. Order for a hearing to audit the city of Boston's accountability, transparency, and accessibility regarding construction sites impacting small businesses.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, just so you know, Flynn, you're up next. So I'm really excited to file this hearing order, and I'm going to do it in Spanish and English, okay? Just because I think it's really important for us to be utilizing our microphones in ways that everyone can really understand. And the reason why we're here today is because a group of specific Latino-owned businesses had reached out to our office looking for some support around some of the construction that is happening in and around the Blue Hill Lab corridor that is really impacting their ability to keep their doors open. Many businesses have reported that they have had to lay off employees. Some have reported being months behind rents because they're unable to literally keep their doors open as a result of all the construction that is happening. And so some of the things that we are hoping to learn with this hearing order is to really get an understanding around the accessibility of information. Once a construction site has been deemed, and you have National Grid, Eversource, and all of these folks who have to do the business of making sure that we are running properly, but sometimes businesses are not getting the information in a timely fashion. There's also some concerns around the transparency work around accountability. A lot of these businesses are looking for some support from the city of Boston in regards to some of the financial impact that they've had. Not sure who or what, if any, resources exist. And I think that there is an opportunity for us to do a deeper dive in really looking at how the city is holding itself accountable to supporting small businesses. We have been working alongside Rep. Gonzalez on the state level around supporting micro businesses. And in that conversation, learned that the city of Holyoke had found a way to support their small businesses during construction. And I think that this hearing will give us an opportunity to explore as many tools that we have in our toolkit. But more importantly, when it comes to holding ourselves accountable, this gives us an opportunity to see what that looks like. In the city of Seattle, they have provided impacted businesses with over $650,000 in a fund offered as options to defer payment on utility bills, business permits, signage. And so it'd be interesting to hear what, if anything, we could be doing here in the city. I've heard from a lot of business owners that they never heard that construction was going to happen right outside of their doors. And so there's some issues around how the city has been responding. So this is an opportunity for us to get a little bit clearer, to learn a little bit more, and more importantly, to help support our small businesses. So en español ahora. So nosotros hemos estado trabajando con los negociantes hispanos, particularmente los negociantes que tienen, han tenido problemas con la construcción que están pasando en sus áreas de negocio. Y como ustedes nos han pedido una oportunidad para tener una audiencia, para hablar sobre qué nosotros como la ciudad podemos hacer para ayudar a los negocios pequeños. Y también a investigar qué es lo que tenemos que hacer, no solamente para reparar el impacto financiero que ustedes han recibido, y también a ver la comunicación que uno tuvo en esta situación. So esperemos tener esta audiencia para ver cómo podemos ayudar a los negocios micro aquí en la ciudad de Boston. Gracias.
Thank you. Gracias. The chair recognizes Counsel Pepin. Counsel Pepin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to stand really quickly to express my support to Counsel Mejia's hearing order. I also want to give her a shout out for organizing a very informative meeting, I think it was on Sunday, with a lot of the business owners. I know that they really appreciated that. I actually sent a business owner that called my office to that meeting. So thank you for holding that space. I think that's very important to look at how we share information in regards to construction updates. Business owners are struggling. This is outside of my district, but I dealt with it in my previous role. You know, the Boston Water and Sewer Project went on on Blue Hill Avenue. It's affecting so many businesses that are Spanish-speaking, or the ones I reached out to, are Dominican owners, Dominican business owners, and they just don't even know where to go. So I just want to make sure that we are not looking just at city departments, but at those quasi-government departments like Boston Water and Sewer, to also do their job of reaching out to them so they can know what to expect, provide schedules and updates so that these business owners can come up with a right business plan going forward. But that's why I'm supportive of this.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President. Thank you, Counsel Mejia, for always advocating for small businesses. I also want to acknowledge the work that you did, Counsel Pepin, over on the bridge and advocating for that group of businesses over there. You know, we've all seen firsthand how ongoing construction can impact small businesses. So I love the idea of getting creative on, you know, not only just the communication side, but if we could stand up a front, kind of make sure that we're mitigating the impact, the negative impacts that small businesses are going through while construction is happening. So thank you again, and looking forward to the conversation, and please add my name.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to the maker and to my council colleagues. Since you brought up D7, just a little clarification. Repairing our infrastructure is crucial. And I support your statements in terms of, you know, communication. And I think that the Transportation Department and the Streets Cabinet overall has been doing a good job. However, there's room there for creative planning in terms of consolidating calendars of these different types of utility work through an app where it would actually notify our constituents immediately of where to avoid so that they can better plan for their transportation, for their daily... transportation, for their daily activities. So I just wanted to rise and support the conversation, the filing, and look forward to digging deeper into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter?
I also want to thank Council Mihia for this offering. I think Council Pepe mentioned it as well, Council Orrell. The Bridge is a perfect example, the one in Hyde Park that's been an ongoing issue. Want to lift up the work of Representative Consalvo, who was able to get money in the state budget to help mitigate a lot of what they were experiencing, but shared among the, I think, 11 businesses that are suffering right now on the Bridge. Some of them have had to close. It just hasn't been enough. And so we floated that idea around of what it would look like for the city to have a mitigation and impact fund. I know we talked about it last budget cycle. Would love for that to revive as we think about how to support our small businesses. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name?
Mr. Clerk, will you please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mihia, oh, sorry, Mihia's the sponsor, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. Docket number 0761 will be sent to the Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseure. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number? We're going to go back to docket number 0760. Will you please read docket number 0760?
Docket number 0760, Council Flynn offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss plans to address drag racing, dirt bikes, ATVs, and other off-road vehicles on neighborhood streets.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a hearing to discuss how we can address cars, dirt bikes, ATVs, other off-road vehicles on our neighborhood streets that are engaged in drag racing, speeding, doing stunts, other dangerous gatherings. As we all know, there was a drag racing incident a couple weeks ago on a Sunday morning in the Back Bay, and I represent part of the Back Bay. This was a group of 41 vehicles blocking the roads around Marlborough Street, who were effectively shutting down the roads, using their cars to do donuts on Dartmouth and Marlborough Street, drag racing Commonwealth Avenue throughout the South End as well, driving the wrong way on our streets. There were 30 911 calls, and Boston Police and Mass. State Police responded. Reports indicated that because of the narrow streets and the way they were blocked, first responders could not get to the scene in their cars. This also would have been a recipe for disaster, for first responders to get there in a medical emergency. When officers attempted to reopen the streets, they were met with glass bottles and fireworks. Boston Police said people were filming the illegal activities with professional-looking cameras. This is not an annoyance to residents who are woken up, who is a significant public safety challenge. If you watched the video, you know that this was also extremely dangerous for people doing these stunts themselves. For the people that had been filming these stunts in the middle of the streets while trying to go viral on social media, they were mere inches away from the vehicles. But it was also especially dangerous for nearby pedestrians, bystanders, on their walks home. Someone could have easily been killed or seriously injured. Could you imagine someone, an elderly person, suffering a heart attack or a stroke, and the ambulance clinic get down to the street? Aside from the very real threats to physical injury or harm to other people, these senseless acts could have caused damage to property as well. Unfortunately, this is not an isolated incident. Our city streets across Boston, including my district, they're drag racing streets now, even highways. Last year, for example, there was a large gathering of cars near the Oxford Papas property in the South Boston waterfront for some sort of gathering at 3:00 in the morning. Residents in my district are long concerned about dirt bikes doing wheelies on main streets and commercial roads, including state property as well, down towards Castle Island. High-traffic car rides, ATVs, and other dangerous vehicles. This happens every year. A few years ago, we had a fatal crash at M Street and East Broadway in South Boston involving a gentleman who was driving a motorbike. Both myself and Mayor Wu, then-City Council Wu, we met with the residents there several days later. I believe the Boston Police should be proactive in addressing these issues. This is a regional problem. It demands a regional solution. We need to keep track of vehicles that are engaged in these illegal races and seize these I hope that we can have a discussion about strategies on how we can address this issue and provide residents with the best public safety support we can, addressing quality-of-life issues, and also, in my opinion, this is a public health issue as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Durkin. Council Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilor Flynn, for highlighting what happened in my district a couple of weeks ago. So I was able to talk with Mary Ellen Burns, who is the Communications Director for BPD, does such a great job, and I just wanted to share some of the details of what happened with my colleagues, and also the work that BPD is already doing to ensure safe streets. So BPD has done several operations over the past year and a half to address revelers and to restore quiet streets. This year, similar to last year, BPD has invested in its auto-theft task force and is leading the way with moderating activity across the city and doing Code 19s, walk-in talks, and hotspot areas for activity, and targeted enforcement in active areas. What happened that day was very different from what we're experiencing in other parts of Boston. That was called a "street takeover," and BPD has mostly focused on trying to address revelers and restoring quiet streets, but they've already been working on this issue. And obviously, there's been a lot of coverage of what the city has been doing in this respect. But I just want to share, I think, there's been a lot of conversation about whether BPD did the right thing in this instance. And in my opinion, they were on this, they were on the street in three minutes of being called. The streets were blocked, so they approached everyone who was on the street on foot, and no one was injured. To me, that's a success. So I just want to share that, and thank you, Councilor Flynn, for filing this.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mihia. Council Mihia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to my colleague for filing this. You know, one of the things that my office has been really proud of doing is really creating space for people who are usually the ones that are considered causing the harm, to really be a part of the conversation. And I'm really going to ask my colleague that when we host the hearing, that we can invite some of the young people that my office has worked with in years prior around this particular issue. And I believe you may have remembered that it was first the fireworks, then it was the parties that were happening, you know, down Cummins Highway, then, oh, American Legion Highway, then it was all of the motorbikes going through Franklin Park. So we have really have focused a lot of our energy in educating people who are causing harm, and educating them about the laws that are in place, the impact that they're making, but more importantly, creating space for them to be part of the solution, right? And I'm really hoping that as we continue to have this conversation, that we invite some of those young people into this space so that they can be a part of the solution. And I think that, you know, I'm more than happy to make those connections, Councilor Flynn, because we're not, the only way we're really going to change it is if we bring them along with that change. Because we can pass as many pieces of legislation, if people are not, if they don't know about the ordinances that exist, they're going to keep after them. So I would recommend and ask that we invite people in, not just call them out, and I'm looking forward to working in partnership with you. We've hosted series of community conversations. We've done things right onsite in Franklin Park. We've worked with Franklin Park Coalition. We've worked with youth groups. We've worked with a lot of people, and I think that it's going to take all of us working in different ways to really address this issue as a city. So looking forward to being a partner with you in doing just that.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Council Flynn, for filing this. I wholeheartedly agree. Our community safety should come first. I do also agree with Council Mihia in terms of making sure that we're bringing people that are doing this. I'm not sure how we're going to motivate or incentivize them to do that, but maybe there are some people out there that are interested to come to the table and possibly have this conversation about solutions. I do think that this speaks to an opportunity here to talk about our open space and spaces that where our youth is decompressing their stressors. We, as a public health, safety, I think, issue, then we also, this directly connects to the fact that we are not addressing social determinants of health to the point where we are so congestedly populating areas of poverty, and we do not actually afford or allow space where our youth can go and decompress. So I'm looking forward to the conversation. Very interested. And again, Council Flynn, thank you for filing this and wholeheartedly with the utmost attention. We need to really pay attention to safety in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mihia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, please add the Chair. Docket number 0760 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0762?
Docket number 0762, Council Mihia offered the following: Order for a hearing to audit the community engagement efforts of Boston Public Schools' Green New Deal and Long-Term Facilities Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council Mihia. Council Mihia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. And so before I read my remarks, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, when it comes to BPS, I feel like we just have so much to learn in terms of how we really hold them accountable to the community engagement process. And I think that, you know, while, who knows where this is going to land, I really do believe that there's an opportunity for us to create space for people to hold BPS to some sort of level of standard when it comes to decision-making. And so I'm really excited to read this into the record. It was crafted by one of the young people that is interning in our office. She has been working on the Green New Deal. Her name is Kiara. She's been working on issues of community engagement as it relates to the Green New Deal and other facility plans here in the City of Boston, and has participated in countless community engagement meetings, and has really shepherded this piece of, this hearing, you know, bringing it back to the forefront. We filed it last year, and this is a refiled but with a little twist. So I just want to bring her voice into this space. I'm hoping that my colleagues would join us soon, where she's going to be doing a PowerPoint presentation. But for now, here is her words. "Our students deserve to thrive in schools that are safe, well-maintained, and fully equipped to meet their needs. This is why we are filing a hearing order to audit the community engagement efforts of Boston Public Schools' Green New Deal and Long-Term Facilities Plan. While the new Green Deal for BPS marks a step forward, it falls short of meeting these expectations. Too many of our schools are dealing with years of neglect and disinvestment, leaving students, parents, and faculty feeling overlooked and disconnected from the decision-making process. Communication between BPS and the community is vague, lacks transparency, important updates, and often reveals to the public only through the last-minute press conferences, leaving little room for community input. I've been there. I've seen it, and I can co-sign that to be the facts." Anyways, "Community meetings and workshops, though available, are not widely publicized or accessible, and the information provided is often insufficient to understand the decision-making behind school changes. Attempts to seek clarification through direct communication with the city and BPS departments are often met with silence or significant delays in response, and we already know what that looks like. This leaves many families feeling frustrated and disempowered as they struggle to obtain basic information about the future of their children's education. By holding a thorough audit, not just a hearing, to have a hearing, but to really dive deep into how transparent we have been in this process around community engagement, the efforts associated with the Green New Deal and the Long-Term Facility Plan, we can identify areas for improvement and ensure the voices of all stakeholders are heard and valued." And I think that, you know, if we keep talking about repairing the harm and repairing the trust and repairing this, that, or the other, like, this is an opportunity for us to really have a conversation with BPS. And I'm happy that I, you know, founded an organization dedicated to organizing parents and working alongside educators and students, because we're now at a place that things continue to be done to us, without us, and we have an opportunity to really hold ourselves and the city and BPS accountable to those that we serve. And I look forward to hosting this hearing so that we can do just that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mihia. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I want to thank you for this filing. It's incredibly important that we get this right for our kids. Buildings, infrastructure is policy, and it affirms the dignity of our young people with two schools, having graduated from two schools that are experiencing transitions to new buildings, to upgrades at the Taylor and at the McCormick, now soon to be Ruth Batson Academy, and the Taylor merged with the P.A. Shaw. It's important that we hold BPS accountable and to letting us know what the full picture is for the facilities plans for our district. So thank you, Council Mihia. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. Docket number 0762 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0763?
Docket number 0763, Councilors Pepe and Durkin offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss ways to repair and maintain private ways.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Pepe. Council Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Can I also add Counselor Brian Morell as a third original co-sponsor?
Counselor Pepe, see suspension of the rules to add Council Orrell as an original third co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Council Orrell is so added. Council Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also just want to say that I got a lot of outreach from different colleagues that expressed interest in this, so thank you so much for showing your support. For those of you who don't know, Hyde Park was actually the last neighborhood to become part of the City of Boston back in 1912. Because of that, it came with dozens upon dozens of private ways. Private ways were an opportunity to provide homeowners more control over one's property while saving costs on utilities some time ago. Now, as our streets and neighborhoods have become denser, once a potentially cost-saving opportunity for one or a few homeowners has become a costly and disastrous situation for not only the many residents that have built homes on the street, but the surrounding neighbors and emergency responders that may drive down to get to and from homes. In Hyde Park, Harris Street and Summer Street are cut-throughs for Austin's summer streets that have craters, not ordinary potholes, true craters that can easily wipe out a front bumper in one pass are sprinkled throughout this short pathway. These roads, in particular, are nearby the Gru School, causing a deep safety concern for not only guardians striving to pick up their students, but also for cyclists and pedestrians that can easily trip, if not watch intently. While private ways under the purview of public works, I do believe that there can be partnerships and other opportunities to alleviate these growing financial burdens of residents who inherited a decision made decades ago, when their homes may not have even been constructed. This would only, this would be one of many conversations, as I know private roadways are throughout our city, and I look forward to working with my colleagues, the administration, state officials, pushing for larger legislation and organizations with creative solutions. I also just want to acknowledge that just this morning, at the Mattapan Coffee Hour, I got pulled aside by a firefighter who lives on a private street, and he got a flat tire because he drove by one of these craters on his street in Hyde Park. And just two weeks ago, a mother on Hell Street, also in Hyde Park, reached out to me, begging us to please fix her private way because her daughter couldn't ride her bicycle down the street without having to swerve all around those potholes. down the street without having to swerve all around those potholes. For me, I feel hopeless when I say I'm sorry. Public Works cannot, cannot pave this road, and I think it's time to change that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pepe. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Counselor Pepe, for filing this. I'm glad to co-sponsor, and I hope, and I'm hoping that we can all come together to eventually see improvements on our private ways, such as Backstreet in my district. Private ways in my district are utilized by everyone who travels through Boston. With Ways and Means hearings covering fiscal year 25 operating budget and the Public Works and Transportation Department's hearing under our belts, I think we're all uniquely aware of the concrete, no pun intended, cost required to keeping our roads safe and traversable. Therefore, I understand the hesitance to consider increasing that cost by adding additional roadways to the city's purview. However, any additional budget cost is far lower than the safety costs that present themselves along roads which remain private and are failing to meet basic safety and maintenance standards. So, I'm excited by the forward-thinking of Counselor Pepe. And I just want to be very clear, we aren't asking to get involved in any private ways that aren't asking for it, we just want to have a conversation about the ones that are having trouble coming together. You know, oftentimes, I think, I think of Backstreet. Those residents on those streets would have to come together, and oftentimes, in those conversations, there is a deep inequities between some people in the conversation and others' inability to pay. So, what we're looking to do is really have a conversation about these private ways that are being used as public ways, and, you know, their significance in the city, and to try to have a conversation. It won't be possible that we can help every single private way, but giving that, given that some of them have such significance in the neighborhoods that are, that they're in, and given that, and I, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, we're all traveling via Rideshare and Uber and Lyft, and oftentimes, our drivers are asked to drive on streets, regardless of whether they're, they're city or, or private ways. And so, the impact that cars and are making on these streets, the residents aren't able to actually, the residents aren't able to actually control the type of use on those streets. So, this is an incredibly important conversation. Thank you so much, Counsel Pepe, for leading it, and excited to take part.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Morell. Counsel Morell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to Counsel Pepe and Counsel Durkin for adding me as a third, third co-sponsor. In my district, the issue of maintaining private ways is pressing. I remember when I was out on the campaign trail, walking down streets, and like, Counsel Pepe said, there was these, these craters on streets where affordable housing units were on both of the sides, and to learn that those homeowners would be responsible for the cost was just mind-blowing to me. Many homeowners that we, that I found were unaware that they can, that they own a property on a private street, and were shocked that they, they were responsible for costly repairs, such as lighting, sewer, and road maintenance. This surfaced most recently when members of the Harvest Commons Development attempted to get their sidewalk fixed, and were told it was private. Fast forward five years later, and the residents in this new complex, which was built 15 years ago, now need to pay $8,000 each to get their sidewalks entries up to code to take them back. And if they delay, they were told that the process can't begin again till 2029, and the cost would be higher, or could be higher. This financial decision has torn this development apart, pitting neighbors against neighbors within a five, within, with nearly five-figure bills coming. It's a situation and decision that no homeowner should have to face, and it's all because of old laws, which I believe are 100 years old. The law governing this issue, as I said, is century-old and seems outdated, like, who wants to pay for their sidewalk? Who wants to pay for the pipes underneath their, underneath their sidewalks? Who wants to pay for public lighting? And I think what we need to do is have more of a conversation on the city, with the city, on opt-in, opt-out, who wants to be private, who wants to be public, and just make sure that we're putting the investments to converting those streets. So, looking forward to the conversation, and thank you for adding me.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Please add my name. I, I have some personal experience with this. I lived on a private way in Boston for nine years. You know, something that comes up in, in, with these private ways is you need neighbors to agree, and where you have homeowners living alongside renters, it's even, you don't even know who the absentee landlord is, and so, I, it just, you know, sewage and, you know, infrastructure is an issue, but so is just snow removal. The, you know, city plows don't come down the private ways, or sometimes they do, but they're not supposed to, but to get homeowners and renters to come together to shovel was, you know, just an annual ritual that was a circus. But, and, you know, it, just in my district, we have an 88-year-old woman who lives on a street, a private way, with potholes where ambulances can't get down, and, and there's, you know, you need, somehow you need unanimous agreement to, for people to pay for that. Again, absentee landlords really have no willingness to do this. So, thank you for bringing this up. I think it's an important issue and something that we can help improve our city with. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counsel Pepe and Counsel Durkin for bringing this one forward. I think every district has issues with private ways, and anecdotally, we have, we have a street in, in, in Brighton called Rushmore Street, and it's a, it's a public, it's a public street, and then the public street part ends, and it's a private way, that, that has a very precipitous drop. And someone who was door-knocking for me out on Rushmore Street a few years ago came back and said, "You have to come out and look at this, there's a cliff, there's a cliff, the road just goes over a cliff." And I went out and looked at it, and then neighbors came to me and says, "Can you do something about this private way business because we can't afford to fix it, and it's dangerous?" And actually, because of ways and the GPS systems, a, I think it was an Amazon van tried to navigate going down this cliff, much to the consternation of the neighbors, and I don't know if the guy survived it, but I think, yes, we have to come up. This is an ancient artifact of a previous time, and I think we really do need to get together and address the situation to see if we can help our neighbors who are desperate to find some solutions, but also to improve safety for all travelers on our streets. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernand Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I won't belabor the points, I was one of the people that was trying to be the fourth co-sponsor. And since that's not a thing, just wanted to thank you to the makers for filing this. This deeply impacts my district's South End, and I know that Counsel Flynn and I have worked actually together on meetings after meetings after meetings with the administration and back and forth, so still looking like a working session, looking forward to the conversation and hopefully to find solutions that will work for this. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this is a issue, as Counsel Fernand Anderson mentioned, this is an issue impacting many neighborhoods, including the South End, including the Back Bay. Just on a South End-related issue, many of the, many of the alleys in the South End are private, and they all share the same water and sewer pipes, so the, so the water and sewer pipes are on the private way. And when there is an issue as it, as it relates to fixing the pipe, it's on the, it's the responsibility, basically, of the residents to pay for an enormous cost of these pipes. A lot of these pipes are old, that they've been there 100 years, and eventually, they, they do need replacement, but I think we do need a long-term strategy and financial plan to ensure that those people that are living on private ways but have public water and sewer issues come into a program, working closely with the water and sewer to address these issues, because eventually, there are going to be major problems in these public alleys. And as you know, many of these public alleys are condos now, so there could be 70, 80 people, units, in this particular, this particular area, and every person has to be involved in signing the agreement to deal with the water and sewer into a, some type of financial agreement. So, it's very complicated, but it's critical that the water and sewer are part of the discussion as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I'll just say that private ways was my first introduction to complicated bureaucracy, and it's a topic that me and my chief of staff, Emily, would have worked on quite a bit, especially when it comes to snowstorms. I think Counsel Weber mentioned that. I remember being called out to, to Prescott Street in Hyde Park by a constituent, doesn't speak any English, and wondering why we weren't plowing the street. And we were able to get some stopgap so that there could be some plowing, but difficult conversation, looking forward to it. Anyone else looking to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Fernand Anderson, Fitzgerald, Murphy, Santana, Weber, please add the chair. Docket number 0763 will be, will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0764?
Docket number 0764, Counsel Louie Jean offered the following. Order for a hearing to utilize former school and municipal buildings as affordable housing.
Thank you. Council President Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Morell. I would first like to add Counselor Santana as an original co-sponsor.
Counselor Santana is added as the original co-sponsor.
Thank you, and I'd like to suspend the rules to add Counsel Weber as a third original co-sponsor.
Counsel Weber is added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Counsel Morell. I offer this hearing order because the urgency to create more affordable housing has never been more critical. This hearing order represents a proactive approach to repurposing Boston's underused municipal properties, including former school buildings into affordable housing. The city's 2022 land audit and the supportive frameworks established by federal legislation, such as Affordable Housing Conversion Act of 2024, all point in the same direction. We must use all available resources and assets at the city's disposal to fight for affordability. This hearing order also dovetails to the Residential Conversion Incentive Pilot Program, where we have an opportunity to have more housing options in our downtown by increasing residential spaces, thereby stabilizing markets and ensuring economic diversity. This hearing will serve as a platform for open dialogue with community organizations, housing developers, and citizens to explore creative solutions and ensure that the transformation of these properties meets the community's needs. I'm committed to a process that upholds our city's heritage and maximizes the impact of our collective efforts in making Boston a model city for affordable housing development. This also continues the work of the late Mel King, who was really a champion of looking at municipal properties, including our schools, former police stations, libraries, municipal buildings that are no longer being used in their original capacity and looking at them for affordable housing. Also want to shout out to Richard Giordano over at the Fenway, Fenway CDC, who, when he saw this filing, was like, "This is exactly what we've been trying to do." So, really trying to work and lockstep with community organizations that have already been trying to do this, and, so that we can get more affordable housing. So, thank you, Counsel Morell.
Thank you, Council President. The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thank you to Council President Louie Jean for sponsoring this hearing order and including me as a co-sponsor. Council President Louie Jean has covered the importance of this hearing in detail. I just wanted to rise to emphasize a couple of key points. Our city-owned land and buildings are public assets, and they should be put to the highest and best use for the benefit of the public. We're in the midst of a severe housing affordability crisis that is pushing truly all of our residents to the brink, including families, recent graduates and young professionals, seniors living on fixed incomes, and our police officers, firefighters, emergency medical responders, nurses, teachers, and other city workers. Every day, we are losing the people who make our city work and make Boston the place that we love. So, I can't think of no better way to repurpose our city-owned buildings that have retired from their original purpose than to help make housing more affordable for Boston residents. That kind of reuse is also environmentally responsible, and it can preserve some of the historical character of our neighborhoods. And in this era, when we're all considering how we can diversify Boston's sources of revenue, it's also financially responsible. Redeveloping city-owned land can be a revenue source for Boston, and it can provide us access to new federal funding meant to encourage cities to undertake exactly these kinds of reuses of city-owned buildings for affordable housing. I look forward to this hearing, and I hope many of our colleagues will join us in this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam President, and Counsel Santana for bringing this. You know, I think at the end of this month, we're going to hear about a first round of schools that are going to close in, in our district, and, you know, it's important that we think about this issue. We've had a lot of hearings since I came here in January 1st about housing. We've heard a consistent message, there isn't enough housing, there are people getting evicted from their housing, people can't afford the housing that they're in, and we need to find ways to, to build more housing. And so, you know, we can look to cities like Paris, which have innovative programs for, for cities purchasing property and making housing for people who need it, and so, I'm, I'm happy to be a part of this as it goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin.
Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you so much to the Council President Louie Jean and Counsel Santana and Weber for sponsoring this hearing order. I'm so excited about this. I have been speaking with advocates in affordable housing about, about proposals like these. Thank you again, the Council President mentioned, the Fenway CDC has been really thinking about some of the locations in my district and what, what might exist. I believe the McKinley School is sort of close to me and Counsel Tanya Fernandez Anderson's district line, but incredibly excited about the idea of the McKinley School having housing atop. And obviously, this is all based on a model that we are seeing proven at the West End Library, where the city has just chosen POA, Preservation of Affordable Housing, as the developer of housing that will be on top of the West End Library. This is all incredibly exciting. I think, not just thinking about utilizing old buildings that are not used, but thinking about how we can use buildings that will be rich with public services and then atop affordable housing is just, in areas like my district that are transit-rich, this is really the solution to everything that we're trying to solve in the city, and I'm just really grateful to my colleagues for having a real passion for this, and I think together we can all do something and encourage, and, and honestly, let's think about the specific buildings in our districts, and let's start thinking creatively, and I just think of this, if we all come to the hearing with five locations that we don't know what's happening to them, that might be a great way to, to kind of test the panel of whether, of whether the panel and whether BPS and whether the Transportation Department and others are thinking about these locations in our districts and in, in the greater city. Because oftentimes, when I've asked a question, it peels back a layer of, "We're already thinking about this," but it's been put on the back burner. So, just encouraging everyone, that's the kind of prep I want to do for this hearing, and really excited to take part. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Coletta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Vice President Morell. I rise to thank the maker, and please add my name. This is another welcome strategy to try to address the housing crisis here in the city. I keep hearing from residents that they simply cannot afford the communities that they live in. Housing is not affordable enough, and not enough of it is affordable, and so, this is a proven strategy that we could try to implement, and that's been utilized already in my district in old schools like the Lyman, the Chevress, and the Old Barnes High School. I think, I want to be very clear, though, there are a number of surplus, surplus properties in my district that have already been talked about by nonprofits, and so, there is many community organizations that are saying that public buildings should still be used for public good, which could arguably be, includes building for the inclusion of neighborhoods through affordable housing. So, I just want to call that out, and I hope that we could be very intentional in some of the conversations. I do support affordable housing in municipal buildings, but I also want to figure out what the financial frameworks might look like for mixed-use developments, having ground-floor retail that also addresses some of the amenities that we need, like grocery stores and food co-ops. So, looking forward to the conversation, and thank you to the makers. Please add my name.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselors Fernand Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Boston has an interesting history of advocating for more affordable housing within municipal buildings, and I really like to thank Madam President for bringing this forth. The city has been discussed, in discussions with developers to build housing on top of libraries, connecting families and students and seniors to vital civic centers in our community. families and students and seniors to vital civic centers in our community. And prioritizing the construction of affordable housing is crucial, as the housing crisis in Boston is forcing many families, particularly Black and Brown families, to move out of the city. As we talk about building more affordable housing, however, we also need to talk about how we are building more affordable in the first place, affordability in the first place. What I would say about this is, I remember my first conversation ever with the mayor when I first became elected, and she, I would say to her, you know, congesting further populating or congesting more poverty in certain concentrated areas in Roxbury would dampen or hurt our economy. We need mixed housing, but we need affordable homeownership. Then, in partnership with our Chief of Housing, Mayor's Office of Housing, Sheila Dillon, we created the first Boston's rent-owned pilot program, which then went into an RFP process, and hopefully, I think folks from Austin-Brighton may have applied, and I'd need to follow up to see where we are with that. But I think there's an opportunity here. I really like Counselor, my counsel colleagues, both ideas of amenities, as well as Counselor Durkin's ideas, and figuring out, one, amenities, but, two, the idea of going to our districts and saying the buildings. So through, by partnership with the Anti-Displacement Studio, with Northeastern, we actually have done a study, and we have put together these buildings, and we have asked architect students to design the possibilities of, one, creating these amenities so that we can address social terms of health within the district, District 7 specifically, but also what could happen with these buildings. So then we surveyed the community, we then went into interviewing artists with ideas of beautiful, indoor spaces as well, and these amenities and how we can actually create ecosystems or housing ecosystems, again, to address social terms of health. So MIT has agreed to, and I won't mention names, but exciting names, professors at MIT have agreed to actually go into the next step of Anti-Displacement Studio for District 7, which would include spatial mapping, actually addressing pockets of Roxbury and where exactly do, what amenities do we need. I mentioned that we did asset mapping, understanding the assets, therefore, we understand the deficits in Roxbury. So with the spatial mapping, we'll create walkable streets. To be able to, as I've pointed out before, I want to dry-clean, I want to repair my shoes, go to the gym, a juice bar, all within 15 minutes walkable distance. So Counselor President Liu Zhen, thank you so very much for bringing this forward. We will get this opportunity to now have a conversation and hopefully find solutions and to actually address this. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the lead sponsors on this very, very important conversation. You know, sadly, we're seeing so many folks being displaced from the city, and it's another wave of folks who are leaving. And I'm just looking down the list off the top of my head of all the former school buildings that are now housing. Roselandale High School, there was a star old school in Brighton, the Jackson in Union Square, the Western Ave Firehouse has been made into housing, you know, historically. And here we are again with another wave of exodus of families from our city and folks who can't afford to live here anymore. City workers who residency is required and they can't afford to live in the city. So I think this is a very important conversation to have, to look at municipal buildings and former school buildings to see how we can repurpose them to housing. But I'd also like to advocate for looking at them in terms of affordable space for our nonprofit sector. So many of our nonprofits are actually being displaced as well by increasing rents. And their human service organizations, they don't have large endowments to be able to pay market rate rent for offices. So I think, you know, looking at a mixed-use possible model for affordable housing, family housing, to try and stabilize our families, and housing for city workers so that they can afford to stay. So I really look forward to the conversation, and thank you to the lead sponsors for this. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I also want to highlight the growing concern we have here in Massachusetts, but across the country, of homeless veterans. And if during this conversation we are able to include the homeless veterans community as part of the discussion and solution, there is funding available to help on affordable housing projects and developments. I worked closely with Governor Healey on recent $20 million that were allocated to various groups and cities and towns for homeless veterans. But the highest percentage, growing percentage of homeless veterans right now are women veterans. So here are women veterans and their families, and they've served our country, and they don't have an affordable place to live for them and their children. There's something fundamentally wrong about that. Let's also include the homeless veterans community. They have some great ideas, great solutions, there's great partnerships that we could work with, and just want to advocate for the opportunity to include homeless veterans or low-income veterans, especially women veterans as well, to ensure that there's a place for them in the city of Boston. I'm actually working, hopefully working with BHA on a potential project to ensure that there's a place in Boston Housing Authority for women veterans. That's a priority of mine, so it's something I'm going to continue to focus on. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I thank you to the sponsors for bringing this. I am really excited to have this conversation. I remember when I first came into this chamber, Counselor, then previous Counselor Tito Jackson had planted this seed in terms of, like, how can we utilize municipal buildings for affordable housing, but with COVID and all that, you know? We weren't able to really move the conversation forward. But then Counselor Lada, during her time here on the council, and as her role in the housing space, was really looking at ways for us to be creative. And so I'm really happy to see the conversation continue to evolve in this space. And I am really grateful to Counselor Braden, who is really underscoring the importance of a lot of our municipal employees. You know, we're going to be having a hearing soon around workforce development, housing for municipal employees. Like, when we're looking at the housing crunch here in the city of Boston, we have an opportunity to really think outside the box, and if we can utilize that space, to Counselor Anderson's point, in terms of, you know, a little bit more creative and thinking outside the box, I think that that's what this moment is calling us to do. And while, yes, I understand that we have a housing crisis, and that's definitely should be what is driving the conversation, I think that we have an opportunity to really think as creatively as possible, and looking at all of the stock that we have. And as, you know, someone who started my own nonprofit organization, I know that space is limited for nonprofit organizations, and a lot of our faith leaders are also losing space for them to be able to convene. I've had faith leaders who have asked me, do you know anyone who could lend us some space so that we can worship? Space is limited here in the city of Boston. And so I think that the conversation is going to open itself up for us to really think outside the box, and I look forward to doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Just want to thank Council President Liu Zhen and her co-sponsors for bringing this forward. Very much forward-thinking. We're going to be having a conversation with BPS later on in this month about their long-term facilities plan, so this is a great time to bring those conversations. I've also had a few conversations with some nonprofits, well, not daycares, right? Speaking of amenities. So maybe having one of those daycares inside of one of our BPS schools and on-top housing. So I love the idea of partnering with other amenities to bring housing and that service on that ground level. So thank you to all my colleagues for bringing all their ideas and looking forward to this conversation. Would anyone like to add their name? Clerk, please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernand Anderson, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Peppin, and please add Counselor Worrell. Thank you. Docket number 0764 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. I also just want to thank Counselor Mejia for uplifting Counselor Tito Jackson. He's also, some of the best ideas come from former city councilors. I want to shout out my legal intern in our office, who did a lot of the research for this hearing order, and looking forward to bringing all of you in. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0765?
Docket number 0765, Counselor Flynn offered the following: resolution recognizing Black Women Veterans During Black Maternal Health Week.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a resolution recognizing Black Women Veterans, especially during Black Maternal Health Week. Women veterans, as I just mentioned, are the fastest-growing population the U.S. Department of Veterans affairs. According to the VA, there are more than 2 million women veterans across the United States, and Black women comprise 30% of all women veterans who receive health care at the VA. That's a huge and significant number. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention recently reported that Black women, including both veterans and non-veterans, are three times more likely to die due to pregnancy-related cause compared to white women. The VA recognizes the importance of improving maternal health of Black veterans and provide culturally competent training to health care staff so that Black veterans and veterans of color are heard, understood, and respected. This is an issue that I've worked on, but I also know that the city council has also worked closely with me on this. I had the opportunity to visit DC many times over the last several years advocating on these particular issues as part of the Disabled American Veterans Organization. During Black Maternal Health Week, it is important that we focus and advocate on making sure there is equitable reproductive health care for Black women and Black veterans. As the number of women veterans using VA health care grows, we need to support gender-specific health care, create an environment that is safe and welcoming to women veterans. These are services earned and entitled to veterans. We're not giving them anything. They've earned them. I know that Black Maternal Health Week was April 11th to the 17th, but this issue is not just confined to one week. I hope we can recognize the health disparities and challenges Black women and Black women veterans face, and work with our VA and Veteran Services to continue to advocate for better care. And this is an issue, when I have my hearing coming up at the Veterans Committee, I will focus on this issue. I will invite the Commissioner of Veteran Services as well, and I will invite the Veterans Advocate for Women at the VA in Jamaica Plain and West Roxbury to be there to highlight these critical issues. And I'll also have an opportunity for us to specifically focus on Black Women Veterans as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernand Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Flynn, thank you so much for bringing this resolution forth, recognizing Black Women Veterans, especially during Black Maternal Health Week. I stand as a Black woman, and thank you. I think this is a population that is hugely underserved and under-recognized. And as a proud mother of a U.S. Marine, I would be remiss if I didn't say that I really appreciate your attention to our veterans. I also live next to a home for veterans, and I have to tell you that we have to do so much more for services for our veterans. So before, a story that I haven't shared is that while, before I discovered or planned to, I actually planned my first child, believe it or not, because I was so young, before I planned my child, his father was a Marine, and I would join. And then once I discovered that I was expecting my son, decided not to join. So have a deep respect for Marines, and maybe I passed that energy down to my son, and now, of course, a proud Marine. So looking forward to the programs, the conversation, any events that you have with Black veterans. Again, a population that's just hugely ignored, and looking forward to attending anything that you invite us on, Black Women Veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Durkin, Fernand Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. Counselor Flynn, to suspension of the rules and pass of docket number 0765. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. Docket number 0765 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0766?
Docket number 0766, Counselor Flynn offered the following: resolution supporting the extension of the Affordable Connectivity Program in Advancing Digital Equity.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I add Counselor Peppin as an original co-sponsor, but also suspend the rules and add Counselor Mejia as well?
Counselor Peppin is so added. Counselor Flynn, to expansion of the rules, add Counselor Mejia as an original, their co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Mejia is so added. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you to Counselor Peppin for reaching out. And I just want to again acknowledge Counselor Mejia, because digital equity issues she's been a leader on since she started on the council. Being able to access the Internet is now an indispensable part of life, education, work. Having reliable, high-speed Internet access is even more critical at school events, schools, businesses. However, Internet service can be expensive, and having a lack of competition in terms of Internet service can make it difficult for families to find affordable Internet service. The Affordability Connective Program, ACP, is a federal program that offers a $30 subsidy to eligible low-income residents, which is enough to cover services with less data or can constitute a sizable portion of the Internet bill that represents significant cost savings to residents. There are more than 50,000 households in Boston that are reliant on ACP to help pay for their Internet bills, with 368,000 across Massachusetts. However, ACP will expire soon if funding is not extended, and residents will only receive about half of their usual subsidies beginning in May until funding runs out completely. Losing this program will be extremely difficult for digital equity issues and further divide for communities of color, veterans, military families, immigrant neighbors, students, our seniors, working families, persons with disabilities. Last year, 32 senators signed a letter to congressional leadership calling for the extension of funding for ACP. A coalition of 271 civil society groups and local organizations sent a letter recently to Congress asking them to vote on HR 6929, the Affordable Connectivity Program Extension Act of 2024, filed by Representative Yvette Clark. Without ACP, many households will risk losing their Internet service or will find Internet service to be a financial burden. So I hope that we can use this resolution to signal support for the extension of the Affordable Connectivity Program and urge our federal representatives to work towards continued funding of this critical program. And I just would like to highlight during the pandemic, I had many families in Chinatown that when one child would be on the Internet, it would be okay. The child would be able to access their educational programs at BPS. But when the second child from the family tried to access the Internet, they were not able to do that. This was also a major issue in many areas throughout BHA as well. Progress is being made, but there's more that can be done, and let's continue to focus on digital equity. It is really a civil rights issue. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Flynn for adding me as an original co-sponsor. as an original cosponsor. You know, in District 5, there are approximately 10,000 residents that depend on the Affordable Connectivity Program for their access to Internet. Just a hearing that we are... Just a meeting that we're having today, for the residents that are not here, they have to depend on YouTube and other Internet services to be able to actually watch and participate in government. We have determined that access to Internet is no longer a necessity... Sorry. Access to Internet is a necessity, not a luxury. And the United Nations has actually officially declared access to web a human right because of that. But now, it's about to come to an end, as Counselor Flynn mentioned, with the funds expiring this very month. I want to give a special shout-out to U.S. Senator Ed Markey for being such a steadfast advocate for this at the federal level. He's always been someone that's been pushing for this, not only at a municipal level, but statewide as well. So I urge our members of Congress to support the $6 billion that the White House put forward. Our residents cannot afford to lose their access to Internet. And we, as the City Council, should be standing in support of this to make sure our residents continue to have that access that they well deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peppin. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. And God, I feel like I've been here for 100 years, not just four. Not in the chamber, but just... I've done a lot in the four years that I've been here. Good Lord. I've been busy, earning my keep. But I think that the issue of digital equity, especially during COVID, was when I first realized the inequities. And to Counselor Flynn's point, in terms of... Especially during remote learning, we saw a lot of the issues of access. And also, parents being... Working from home, and while their students were trying to learn from home. And we saw that gap. And I want to just uplift and thank Comcast as one of those companies that really stood in that gap, as well as Tech Goes Home and a lot of our digital partners, who really helped meet the moment. And also, Boston Public Schools. As much as I like to get at them, I'm going to give them a shout-out, because they worked around the clock to make sure that we could close the digital gap. And so, I just want to thank my colleagues, or especially Counselor Flynn, for adding me, and Counselor Peppin, for that data in regards to your residents, right? I think that is really important as a district counselor when you come to this chamber and you bring in your people. And I think that was real... That data point that you just shared resonated. And I'm so glad that you brought it here, because people need to understand how important this is, right? So thank you for that. So just want to thank my colleagues and I, and I want to just go on the record in supporting this resolution. And I think that... I think we need to do more here on the Council now that we have budget season. Chair of Ways and Means, let's see what else we could be doing in the digital equity space. And that said, before I get my mic turned off, thank you.
The Chair recognizes... Oh, thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Murphy, Pepe. Oh, not Peppin, he's already on. Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. Counselor Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0766. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk, can you do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0766. Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Lou Jean.
Yes.
Counselor Lou Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number 0766 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0766 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0767?
Docket number 0767, Counselor Fitzgerald offered the following: Resolution recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Durkin and Counselor Mejia as original cosponsors.
Thank you. The Chair... Counselor Durkin is added as an original... You said Durkin first, yes. Counselor Durkin is added as an original cosponsor. Counselor Fitzgerald seeks suspension of the rules to add Counselor Mejia as an original third cosponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Mejia is so added. Counselor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you. Since 1949, May has been recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month in order to spread awareness, fight negative stigmas, as well as advocate for policies expanding mental health resources. And now, with social media, less outdoor play, coming off the pandemic, and maybe even being an elected official in 2024, mental health is all that more important to prioritize. So I, along with my cosponsors, are proud to continue to bring this awareness to the forefront in May and in every month. Because at the end of the day, no matter who we are, let's be honest, we all have a couple screws loose. And that's okay. Ask for help if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fitzgerald. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. You have the floor. Oh, you don't, but now you do.
Thank you so much, Council President Lou Jean. And thank you so much, Counselor Fitzgerald, for your focus on mental health. By celebrating mental health awareness, we can help spread awareness of mental health resources available, reduce stigma, and continue to advocate for policies that reduce the burden for mental health care access. This is a problem much bigger than the City of Boston, but we can start with the City of Boston. We can start with providing accessible and affordable health care for any city employee who seeks it. We can start by knowing the resources already available to us. We can start by sharing resources. We can start today by recognizing the incredible impact that our City of Boston employees and our residents have on their mental health. And we can meet mental health needs by passing this resolution to ensure that workers and everyone in the City of Boston knows that we support them accessing mental health care. And I really appreciate... Sometimes, just saying it out loud is the most important part. So I think when we talk about mental health care awareness, I think I appreciate that it's been a consistent focus on folks on this body, and I really appreciate everyone's advocacy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. And, you know, Counselor Fitzgerald, I feel like in these chambers, I have gotten to know you and appreciate so much of how you show up in this space. So even something like this, you know how to bring it. And so, thank you. More of that, please. So thank you for adding me to join you alongside as a cosponsor. You know, I did not know that. This has been happening since 1949, which is the year that my mom was born. And I often talk about the fact that my mom... My story is open, you know? When I attempted suicide when I was a kid, my mom was too afraid to bring me to the hospital because she was afraid that they were going to take me away from her. But I grew up believing that my mom did not love me because she never got the care that I needed. And because there was so much stigma around the fact that I attempted suicide. And my grandfather was successful at his attempt. And my cousin, who served in the military, was also successful in his attempt. But what hurts me the most is that in my family, we don't talk about it because of all the stigma that exists. And so, having a month to really uplift it and to own it is important. So thank you. And I think that... I think about my daughter now, who's 14 years old, and who literally had a hard time during COVID. And all of the students that suffered in silence, many of which were in homes that did not love them. And the only place that they felt seen was in school. And it was really hard for a lot of kids to deal with their mental health. And so, this is one of the reasons why I am such a big champion of mental health and wellness activities here in the City of Boston. And I think that we are now the adults that we were hoping we had when we were little kids. And so, I just want to thank you, Counselor Fitzgerald and Counselor Durkin, because you always talk about your own experience, Counselor Durkin, in this space. And I think that vulnerability is a superpower. And oftentimes, being strong is important. But being vulnerable, I think, is a quality that should also be uplifted. Because in your ability to be vulnerable is when you can be the strongest. And so, I think more of that is needed as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counselor Fitzgerald, for bringing this important resolution to the floor. Acknowledging May as Mental Health Month is more than just a symbolic gesture. I see it as a call to action. Advocating for mental health awareness is crucial across the board. And we need to especially uplift the ways in which social inequities impact people's mental health. The Boston Public Health Commission 2024 Mental Health Report found that Black Atlantic's residents more frequently reported experiencing mental health symptoms. In addition, Boston indicators found that nearly a third of all LGBTQ+ adults have experienced depression at least once in their lifetime. It's especially crucial to acknowledge this month that has taken place during budget season, where we are seeing cuts to mental health support in Boston Public Schools. I hope that in recognizing the importance of mental health awareness, we can put our money where our mouth is and is, and fight for more funding to improve mental health for young people, many of whom have spent a large portion of their lives, as Counselor Mejia pointed out, learning from behind a screen with difficulties through COVID. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Fernandez-Anderson, Flynn, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the Chair. Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselors Durkin, and Mejia. Suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0768. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has been adopted.
Yes.
Oh. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I'd like to go on record in support of docket 0766.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can you please add Counselor Coletta as in support for docket number 0766? And Counselor Fernandez-Anderson?
Madam President, thank you. I'd also like my vote to be in the affirmative, recording the affirmative for docket 0766.
Mr. Clerk, can we... Seeing no objection, can we add her? Thank you. Counselor Durkin.
Hi. I'd also like to make sure that my name is added to 0764.
Added, okay. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you make sure Counselor Durkin's name is added to 0764? Thank you. We are now on to docket number 0768. Mr. Clerk, if you could please read docket number 0768.
Docket number 0768, Counselors Fitzgerald and Murphy offer the following: Resolution recognizing National Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. In recognizing this week as National Teacher Appreciation Week, I'm proud to cosponsor this with my colleague, a former public school teacher. And as many of you know, I am the husband of a public school teacher as well. And I can tell you through those times, one doesn't really have an idea how much dedication teachers have to their craft in terms of time spent, the money out of their own pocket to fill up their classroom for the things the kids need, and the blood, sweat, and tears that goes on behind the scenes to bring the best academic situation to the children that they have in front of them. And I know I see it in my own house every day. So my admiration has only grown over time for this. What I would like... I would like to ask all of my colleagues to do is, maybe not this week, but in this month, if you all could pick a school in your district and maybe drop off breakfast for the teachers as a way to appreciate them. I put that challenge to all of you. And if you could let me know when you do that, I'll put something together that recognizes all of that. But if you all try to pick a school in your district, I think that would be a great thing. I'm going to drop off donuts and coffee at one of the schools as well. All of you, many of you do it already. But please, for this month especially. But with that, we're just happy to bring about National Teacher Appreciation Week, because we all know that a good teacher can change one kid's lives, let alone many. And we need more of them. So thank you so much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you to the lead sponsor. Also, Anthony Landry earlier mentioned how there is a disproportionate percentage of women are our 911 call takers. And we know that's also true in teaching. My mother, she's worn many different hats in her life. She's an attorney, an accountant, a computer programmer. But I always think of her in her career as a teacher. My Auntie Peggy, 84. Similar to your story, Counselor Mejia, still gets up every day because she can't afford to retire, but loves her teaching job. And as a former Boston Public School teacher, I am now a proud mother. My daughter teaches in the Boston Public Schools. So any opportunity I have to uplift teachers and recognize their hard work that they do and their dedication and how they change the lives of our students is important. So looking forward to celebrating the teachers across the city and this month at all of our schools. And know that we recognize you. And during this budget season, we've had a few. Not all of our BPS budget hearings, I know that. Just know that myself and our colleagues are advocating to make sure you have the resources you need so that you can do the job that you need. But we know you always dig deep and give more of yourself than most other professions do, and it's recognized. So thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Oh, the Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to thank my colleagues for finding this resolution. And this morning, there were teachers from the Sarah Greenwood who were out fighting for higher rate wages. And I think it's really important for us to recognize, especially during this budget season, right? That those who are doing the hardest work, oftentimes, which is preparing the next generation of leaders, that are oftentimes having to fight for every single little nook and cranny that they get. And I think it's really important for us to utilize this little power that we have, especially during the budget season, to make sure that we are going to fight for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Pepe. Counselor Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the creators of this resolution. I am just very thankful to the BPS teachers, because they are a big part of the reason why I'm here today. Shout out to specifically Mr. Dion, who was my civics teacher all throughout middle school at the Hurley, and to Mr. Pitts Dilly, who was my teacher twice at the O'Brien. Both of them, just, I always think about my childhood, and there's always a teacher that comes to my mind that played a role in it. And I think that being part of the ways and means conversation with BPS, visiting the BPS schools, or just schools in general, I'm just so thankful for all the work that our teachers do, and for the work that they do to make sure that our kids are educated, taken care of throughout the day. Thank you so much for Fitzgerald and Murphy for bringing this to the table today. I stand with you on this. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to rise to say that teachers are like guardian angels. They're freaking amazing. A long time ago, I worked as a para for three weeks. I didn't last. I ran to my car, cried, and quit. So, and then I was like, no, I don't know how they do it. It's isolating. You're in a classroom for long periods of time. The whole system, right, like, hopefully we get more into outdoor learning and spaces. Whew, it's a lot. And the type of, as you said, Counselor Fitzgerald, just wanted to second that, like, the type of comprehensive planning and strategic maneuvering and managing of emotions and addressing crisis and problem solving, it's a lot. You have to be everything. Social workers, like, you're a teacher, but you have to be a social worker. So I just really wanted to support this and say, I do, in my district, I do school tours every Friday, so I circulate from school to school. But adding the breakfast component to it is definitely a plus. Thank you for the idea.
Thank you. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I want to thank the sponsors, I want to thank Counselor Fitzgerald for offering this this morning. I started my morning with our teachers around the corner from my house at the Chitik, so that we make sure that we are honoring them, not only during this month, but also in how we support their work in the classroom, so that they can really show up for our kids and their own families. Someone told a story this morning about a para who was living out of her car. It's unacceptable. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Fernandez Anderson, Flynn, Mahia, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Wohl, please add the Chair. Counselor Fitzgerald, suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0768. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you, docket number 0768 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0769.
Docket number 0769, Counselors Fitzgerald and Murphy offer the following resolution recognizing National Nurses Week.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. It's great to be up here and offering this resolution, recognize National Nurses Week. As many of you know, I am the son of a nurse. My mom was a nurse. You can see the theme here of the female role models in my life, being excellent and having excellent application. So if there's any guy or any person to do it in any month to honor these people, it's going to be May. And so with that, I would like to talk-
I don't think that people caught the joke. I caught it.
It doesn't matter.
But you can continue, Counsel Fitzgerald.
Doesn't matter who catches it, right? You guys all acted very professional, by the way, in keeping a straight face.
Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor. You have the floor, Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes, thank you. Well, the weeks are in sync, you know.
Okay, please continue.
Sorry, all right, I'll go on, I'll go on. But either way, a shout out to the nurses. They do make the best moms, and they do do the work of when we are at our weakest moments, they are there to help us feel better. And I'd like to give a special shout out, especially, there's nurses over at Brigham and Women doing informational picket right now, or it's Saturday at noon, maybe over, about the offer of their healthcare benefits, as the ones who are offering healthcare to others, making sure that they have their own healthcare. And so a shout out to the Mass Nurses Association and their informational picket going on, that we support that. But again, when we're at our lowest, they're there to pick us up and make us feel good. And just like teaching, it's a noble profession that requires a lot of work, and you put up with a lot of flack from people that are, when they're, they're not their best when they're at their lowest or their weakest. And so, you know, the mental health awareness goes to nurses as well. But happy to bring this forward and recognize National Nurses Week as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Always important, I always, as a teacher, we did always share it with the school nurses all this week. We should have our own, but I think it's important that we just give them lots of love. Just last week, Counselor Flynn and I visited the South Boston Community Health Center at a staff luncheon, and I know we were at a rally, and many of us have been advocating for Steward Healthcare and the, all of the, you know, Mass Nurses, but SEIU 1199, all of our healthcare workers. Nurses save lives. My Auntie Kay is in the hospital this week, and just going over to visit her is just heartwarming, just to see nurses like teachers, like moms, like just show up and give the care that we need. And to never forget that just a couple years ago, we were calling them heroes, and now we're on picket lines trying to help them keep their jobs. So it's important that we on this council, because we can make a difference, that we continue to advocate to make sure that they have what they need to do their lifesaving work. So thank you for recognizing nurses always.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy, and a speedy recovery to your Aunt Kay. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Fernandez Anderson, Flynn, Mahia, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Wohl, please add the Chair. Counselors Fitzgerald and Murphy, suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0769. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you, docket number 0769 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0771?
Docket number 0771, Counselor Coletta, offer the following resolution for a dedication for Master Sergeant James B. Fitzgerald at the intersection of Holden Row and Wellesley Street in Charlestown.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. James Jimmy Fitzgerald was born on October 2nd, 1937, and was a lifelong resident of Charlestown. I'm not sure if there's any relation to our resident Fitzgerald here, but he was a lifelong resident of Charlestown, was a 30-year veteran of the Boston Fire Department, and was a former president of the Boston Firefighters Union Local 718. Master Sergeant Fitzgerald passed away during summer of 2017, but his legacy in Charlestown lives on through his family. He was a member of the U.S. Army and served this country with valiance for 32 years. I'm honored to bring this to the council for a request for a dedication in his memory at the intersection of Holden Row and Wellesley Street in Charlestown, and I'm asking my colleagues to suspend and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Fernandez Anderson, Flynn, Mahia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Wohl, please add the Chair. Counselor Coletta, suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0771. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed say nay. Thank you, docket number 0771 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0772?
Docket number 0772, Counselor Coletta, offer the following resolution in support of an act to increase access to disposable menstrual products.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. You have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam President. Throughout my tenure, I've been a proud champion of menstrual equity, and I'm proud to bring forth this resolution of the I Am Bill. Half of the world's population requires menstrual products, and it is integral that a first-class city like Boston be at the forefront of reducing period poverty or the inability to afford these products. Unfortunately, food stamps or WIC funds are not allowed to be used for menstrual products. Approximately 1 out of 10 menstruators in Massachusetts lives in poverty and struggles to pay for menstrual products. This bill ensures that all people, regardless of documented status, income status, sexual orientation, gender expression, and race, are able to secure the products they need while at schools, homeless shelters, and even Massachusetts prisons. As a city, we've been able to make great strides on this effort by securing access to period products in municipal buildings like our Boston Public Schools, libraries, and even here on the eighth floor in City Hall. Passage of this bill will bring our city and state even closer to reducing shame and stigma associated with the lack of income or accessibility to menstrual products. The I Am Bill was passed by the Senate unanimously in October 2023, the second in October 23. I encourage and urge my colleagues in the House to secure a passage for this bill during this legislative session, so we can bring the legislation to the governor's desk. I want to thank Mass Now for their hard work and dedication to menstrual equity, and thank you to Rep. Livingstone, Rep. Barber, and Senator Jalen for sponsoring this bill. I apologize, I did not ask the President that she could be added for a second co-sponsor, but I'm asking that now, and then also asking my colleagues to suspend and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. I'll be brief. Thank you for all of your work and advocacy on ending period poverty and on uplifting this bill. Just honored to be in partnership with you in doing this work. Counselor Coletta and Counselor Louie Zinn, suspension of the rules and passage, would anyone else like to add their name, or would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay, add their name. Counselors Braden, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Pepe, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Wohl. Counselors Coletta and Louie Zinn, suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0772. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk, can you please draw a roll? Call vote.
Roll call vote on docket number 0772, Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta?
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin? Counselor Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Zinn?
Yes.
Counselor Louie Zinn, yes. Counselor Mahia?
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Pepe?
Yes.
Counselor Pen, yes. Counselor Santana?
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber?
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Wohl?
Yes.
Counselor Wohl, yes. Docket number 0772 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Can you add Counselor Durkin? Counselor Durkin, would you like to vote on docket number 0772?
Yes, my vote is yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. 13 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, docket, Counselor Durkin, would you like to add your name to docket number 0772?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, can you please add Counselor Durkin's name? Thank you, docket number 0772 has been adopted. We are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel orders?
Docket number 0773, Counselor Louie Zinn for Counselor Fernandez Anderson, personnel order. 0774, Counselor Louie Zinn for temporary appointment of employee. And docket number 0775, Counselor Louie Zinn for appointment of temporary employee.
Thank you, docket number 077, oh, all those in favor, the Chair moves to pass the docket number 0773 to 0775. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you, these personnel orders have passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Personnel Order Number 0776.
Docket number 0776, Counselor Louie Zinn offer the following order for the appointment of temporary employee Megan Kavanaugh in City Council effective April 20th, 2024.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be offering this personnel order. Megan, you have been outstanding in your role as temporary legal counsel for the City Council, and now I'm happy to be making this permanent, so. All those in favor of docket number 0776, say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you, docket number 0776 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0777?
Personnel order, docket number 0777, Counselor Louie Zinn for Counselor Murphy.
All those in favor of passing the docket number 077, say aye. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. We are now on to green sheets. Will anyone, is anyone looking to pull anything from the green sheets? The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I'm hoping to pull docket 0385 on page four of the green sheets. It's in the Environmental Justice Sustainability in Parks Committee.
Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0385 into the record?
From the Committee on Environmental Justice Resiliency in Parks, docket number 0385. Message noted, authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant for the Recycling Dividends Program 23, awarded by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, to be administered by the Department of Public Works. The grant will fund investment in local programs, including recycling equipment, organics, diversion, outreach, and education, pilot programs, school recycling, toxic reduction, and more.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. All of my colleagues should have a copy of this Recycling Dividend Program grant description. I want to make sure you all had it from the very beginning of the meeting, but just a brief overview, this is a Mass DEP grant that funds municipalities with specific programs and policies proven to maximize reuse, recycling, and waste reduction. Boston Public Works Waste Reduction Team, and I've been working closely with them on this issue and many other issues related to trash, but they will be design, designating a portion of these funds for outreach campaigns to educate Boston residents on how to recycle right and promote Boston's current zero-waste programs. This campaign will include advertisements around the city. The Public Works Waste Reduction Team will also be spending a portion of these funds on replacing the current bins for the Community Food Waste Drop-Off, or Project Oscar program. These new bins will be more durable, rodent resistant, and I think we all love that, and will include a locking mechanism to reduce contamination rates. And I am pushing this forward to my colleagues to consider voting in the affirmative in passing these funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 0385 has been properly before the body. Absent any objection, Counselor Coletta seeks passage of docket number 0385. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. Anyone else looking to pull anything from the green sheets? We are now moving on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are four late file matters that are personnel orders. We will take a vote to add these matters to the agenda. All of those in favor of adding these late file matters, say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you, the late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please read the first late file matter into the record.
First late filed matter, Personnel Order, Counselor Louie Zinn for Counselor Pepe.
The Chair moves to passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. This docket, this personnel order has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read the next late file matter into the record.
Personnel Order, Counselor Louie Zinn for Counselor Durkin.
All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. This personnel order has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read the next late file matter into the record.
Personnel Order, Counselor Louie Zinn for Counselor Durkin.
The Chair moves to pass this late file matter. All those in favor say aye. This personnel order has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read the next late file matter into the record.
Personnel Order, Counselor Louie Zinn for Counselor Durkin.
All those in favor say aye. This personnel order has been adopted. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there are two additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Thank you, the consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember that these are for upcoming dates and events. I know that we have Counselors Fitzgerald and Counselor Murphy, the flag raising is this Friday at 11:00 a.m. We have Open Street, Dorchester on Sunday from 10:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. between Ashmont Street to Linden Street today, as many of us have alluded to, today is May Day, and I know that there is an event in East Boston at 3:30. We are past 3:30, or right at 3:00, I can't talk. Okay. At 216 Border Street in honor of May Day. Do any of my, and then we have two birthdays, Liliana Toledo and Wayne Yi. So happy birthday to the both of these upcoming May birthdays. Do any of my colleagues have any announcements? The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I just wanted to announce that this morning I was proud to host a staff assistant from Woman to Woman. It's an organization that does exceptional leadership for young women throughout, throughout the country and throughout the world, really, but they're having a conference here in Boston that educates young women about leadership development, educational opportunities. It's taking place in Boston. I was able to present, present Molly, their representative with the City of Boston, citation. I want to thank my City Council colleagues for coming by and their staff as well. We had an outstanding conversation with Molly. She talked about the program Woman to Woman, and they are looking for some, maybe volunteers this summer to talk to some of the young women that are coming across the world into Boston for this conference. So I will keep my colleagues posted, and just wanted to highlight this outstanding organization, and I was proud to welcome them to the curly room this morning for a coffee reception.
Thank you, Counsel, oh, Counsel Flynn, are you done? Okay. Thank you, Counsel Flynn, and thank you for bringing them. I was able to speak to a few of them as the reception was wrapping up, and they really do do incredible work. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. Saturday is the Wake the Earth Festival in Jamaica Plain, where we gather and celebrate the decision of Governor Sargent not to put a highway through our neighborhood, and it's a very special gathering. There'll be a lot of people, everyone. Please come to Jamaica Plain and enjoy the food. Thanks.
Thank you. Do any of my other colleagues have any announcements? Okay, we are now moving on to memorials. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of anyone who's passed? I would like to uplift just a few individuals, a dear family friend, family basically, Semadu Madeline Maroney passed away, and I'd just like to uplift her memory. Eileen Dolan McDonald, I didn't know of her passing until recently. She passed away at the end of March. She was a hostess at Sweet Life in Dorchester, and she always confused my sister with me and vice versa. and vice versa, and we were there this past Sunday and learned that she had passed away, and so wanted to uplift her memory because she was always a ray of sunshine whenever I was at Suite Life, and to hear of her passing really saddened me and my entire family. George Debo, who passed away in Matapan this past Sunday, and to Joseph Edwards Jr., who was a giant in the Massachusetts Black Lawyers Association, so just wanted to uplift all of those names, and last but not least, Franklin Dallenberg, who was a co-founder of the Immigrant Family Services Institute in Matapan, for all of the incredible work that he has done. I know that the IFC community is really grieving, and so is his family, as is my family, so just want to uplift those names. The chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, you have the floor.
Today will be closing in memory of Sadie Karina Corales. I'm devastated to inform my colleagues that Sadie is the second person to transition